Twenty seventh, twenty twenty, work session. And I just want to give everybody, again, this remind everybody the informals we have here. At this work session, there will be no votes, no motions, and we want to consider information as presented. And no, no public comment, right? No, there's no public comment today. Public comment is tomorrow night. All right, so now, if the commissioners want to call somebody up here, you know, to respond to questions, then of course, we honor that request. So the first one today is we have Sherri Martin to present findings of a study performed by the Georgia Center for Nonprofits on Assessment of Human Needs in Cobb County. So Ms. Martin, it's good to see you again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. As you all know, I am President and CEO of Cobb Community Foundation, and one of our initiatives, probably one of our most important initiatives ever, is to raise dollars to replace the dollars that had previously been allocated for nonprofit use, providing services in Cobb County that cannot be provided by the government. We started that initiative a couple of years ago. Last year, we gave away a hundred thousand dollars. One of the questions, and that was to fifteen different applicants. One of the questions that we were asked during the training process for the nonprofits is, what is your focus for these grants? We didn't have an answer to that question. We realized that we needed to have a better understanding of the most critical needs in Cobb County, as well as where those needs exist. So we engaged Georgia Center for Nonprofits, their Executive Vice President Kathy Keely. Kathy has worked and done strategic planning for every county, excuse me, for a county or city in every state in the country. That includes, in Phoenix, Arizona, that includes Nashville, Tennessee. She just finished up in Gwinnett County, and we are thrilled that she's been able to lead this effort. When she finishes reporting the results of the study, we'll tell you how we're going to use them in our investing for the community. Kathy Keely.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, audience, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity. We did a deep dive, and lucky for you, I'm not going to share eighty-five to a hundred slides. I've narrowed it down to a few of the most important ones. We looked at all kinds of data around the county, and three major questions. First, we were asked to assess the needs of the county. What's happening in this county? What's going to go on in the next twenty years? And dive into that. We were asked to map the nonprofit sector. What kind of services do you have? Where there might be gaps? And third, recommendations, particularly for the Community Foundation. But as you'll see, we've also got some recommendations that just might go your way, too. So we interviewed, deep-dive, twenty-one individuals in the county, involved in the school systems, involved in healthcare, involved in workforce development, employers, head of Housing Authority, lots of nonprofits. We surveyed and we went out deep. We found fifteen hundred names and addresses of nonprofits and churches that provide some kind of human service. We reached out to them. We had a three-hundred-some list that we got through the nine-nineties, where people actually have assets in their organization. We had a hundred and fifty-two respondents. And then data sources, it actually would take three pages if I said every data source we went to, to gather the data for this. So key things, population, and let me just highlight, you're one of the, I'm going to call you one of the lucky counties, because your population growth is going to be flat. You probably already know it. It is at twenty-two percent. That means you're not on this. Where you have the highest growth, which we're going to want to talk about, is the senior population. You're a county that's compared to the other counties, they're going to have more seniors. And actually, I've been corrected, we're not supposed to use the word senior anymore, because baby boomers are not going to be seniors. We are aging individuals. So your aging individual population will be growing. Cobb is going to continue to diversify, but I just finished Gwinnett, not as much as the counties around you. And the interesting one, which kind of comes together with some things you'll see in a minute, second highest for net employment growth. You're behind Gwinnett. They're going to grow faster with employees, or net employment. But you're second highest of the twenty-six counties in the metro area. When we asked about issues, this is going to be no surprise to you, you've heard it over and over, transportation, affordable housing, homelessness. You're fourth largest for homeless kids in the state of Georgia, and I'm going to have slides to talk about that. And then workforce development, soft skills, employment-ready, numbers of people. You have a lot of people kind of moving to Spalding County, and having to import people into the county to work here, which is an interesting place to be, given your aging population in the future. We have a map, which you will be able to see on your computers, and eventually will be on the foundation site. We mapped every census tract, so we could track poverty, housing, workforce, and education in every census tract. You have higher poverty rates in some communities. With poverty comes things like only eleven percent of the kids are at grade, reading level for third grade. And you have other census tracts, it's ninety-seven percent. So you have these disparities between census tracts. There are also census tracts where there are higher rates of eviction, housing burden, and then educational attainment. So let me see, so this is Land and Regional Commission. Cobb is way over to the right on this slide. Gwinnett, your neighbor over there is a little anxious about their population growth. I don't know where they're going to put all the people, but they're growing rapidly. Yours is a slow growth, which could be good news after what you've been through. Here's your aging population. So the red is the aging population. Individuals sixty-plus will be a majority of the population in the county by twenty thirty-five. This has implications, and it's particularly concentrated in unincorporated East and West Cobb, which means it's county services. That growth has implications for who's going to provide the services. Right now, you only have sixteen percent of the nonprofits that work with seniors in the county. Somebody's going to have to take care of these seniors, and I don't know if you've read the, but we now have the young old, the middle old, and the old old. And it's the old old where we really need services. So that, this is what this is about, and looking at seniors. We set, we did down the census tract, so you can look on the right and see the dark blue are where the most seniors will live. When you get down to the white, that's the few, I'm sorry, I'm using that word again, seniors, habit. Aging individuals will be living. This is another factor, I'm moving fast, housing burden. So the interesting thing here, overall for the county, twenty-nine percent housing burden, that's not bad. The statistic is thirty percent, is that you should be thirty percent or lower. Where the problem is, is that you have an increase in aging individuals. Those people are, as their incomes go down, as they age, housing burden goes up. There will be implications for your housing authority and seniors or individuals aging needing housing. Owner occupied, pretty good. Rent's going up in the county, not, about two percent a year. This affordability, particularly for workforce housing, is becoming an issue.
Excuse me, can you define housing burden? Is it using more than one-third of your income?
Yeah, it's thirty percent of your income or more goes towards your housing bills, and that would be rent, mortgage, and utility payments.
Thirty percent?
Thirty percent is the standard. You should be below thirty percent.
So here it says twenty-nine percent. Is that twenty-nine percent of our population?
Is the total county.
Okay, the total.
So that's taking people, yeah, it's the total county.
Rental and?
Rental and mortgage. Where we have, we have a map for you that will take it down to census tract, and then you can see the difference. You have disparities between different census tracts. So here's the census tract. So the dark blue are spending, are spending between thirty and sixty percent of their income on housing. And again, you want to be below thirty. So the white areas are below ten percent. Again, tract, census tracts for housing burden. This, I'll just quickly show you. So United Way has been working very hard on children and youth. They have a child well-being index. You can see here, they add all this up, they give an index per county, per census tract. You have areas going up, you have areas going down. The thing that we're most concerned about is homeless kids in this county, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. Pre-K, so interesting data here. You're the red at the bottom here. Forty-some, up to forty-four percent of the kids are enrolled in pre-K. Compared to the counties around you, so we did the state of Georgia with DeKalb, Fulton, and Gwinnett, you're at a lower rate. I actually called the Department of Education, I talked to the pre-K people a lot, trying to get underneath this data. So first, this data is from pre-K lottery money, so the school is getting state money. Your public school system does not provide pre-K, doesn't have the space to do it. So you have private pre-K paid for by scholarship or tuition money that wouldn't show on this data. So I can find a private church, they're offering pre-K, put my kids in, pay for it, and I wouldn't show up in this data. This data is people that are enrolled in publicly-funded pre-K programs. We show this because we think it's an issue, pre-K, and it has now become the new kindergarten. The more kids enrolled, the more ready they are for kindergarten and school. So we think there's interesting information here to dig further in. What concerned us most were reading levels. So I worked with the school system, and I have two sets of data. One is provided by school. You have schools, there, I think there are four or five on here, where the kids, thirty, thirty-five percent are reading at the third grade level. You have schools at ninety percent, which is great. You would want all your schools at fifty percent or above as kind of a standard. Below fifty, this is where the prisons use all their estimates. They look at third grade reading and they estimate. There's a whole correlation between kids not reading, that slippery slope. Don't graduate, get in trouble, become juveniles, then later become part of the prison system. So we think this is a really important area for the county, to look at those schools that are below. These are homeless students, and this is the one that we focused a lot on. Since twenty thirteen, you've been going up two percent a year. So there are, according to the McKenty-Vento, which is a federal program, there are seventeen hundred twenty-three youth in this time period, which is the last time we have data, that were homeless. Homeless in the school system means you have no permanent home. You could be on somebody's couch, but you, that's not a permanent home. It's been going up, and it's correlated, these are the kids that are not at rating, at grade level, they're not at the math level, they got trouble in school. And then unfortunately, the federal government's giving you sixty-eight thousand dollars a year to deal with homelessness. That really isn't a lot of money if you're helping homeless kids. So Marietta school system has shown significant improvement. They've reduced theirs because the churches got together and set up a fund for extended stay motels, and they're paying for that. The county has no system to help those kids, and again, it's a growing number.
Yes, the hotel funding, if a child is staying in an extended stay, is that not considered a part of the homeless?
They are, they are still counted as homeless, absolutely. But it's considered a roof over your head as opposed to a couch or a car. So women's, children's homelessness goes a route, family and friends, to the car, to an extended stay, back to family and friends. It's a rotation. And we talk about it as mobility rate, you'll see I have a slide on it in a minute. Here's homeless kids by census tract. We also mapped, then, the schools on here. The green are the top twenty percent for grade-level reading at third grade. The red are bottom, so we've got in the south and way up in the corner there, problems with kids not reading at grade level correlated to also homelessness. And you can see the dark ones are thirty to two-hundred kids homeless on any day. Elementary schools, so they talk about mobility rate, that's the entrance and exit, so kids that leave school, kids that are coming in. The transfer rate due to homelessness is called mobility. You can see the dots where more than twenty percent of Cobb County and Marietta have students with mobility rates over twenty percent. We, I'm going to leave that for a minute. So we were asked, because Chambers typically benchmarked themselves against other counties. Who are we most like? Here, the Chambers taken Mecklenburg County, which is North Carolina, and Fairfax County. And so we mapped, and we were asked, the state of Georgia. Then we also were asked to put in Cobb County. And you can do comparisons, there's kindergarten readiness, third grade reading, eighth grade math, graduation rates, and enrolled. Compared to Georgia, you're doing really well. Compared to who you see as your workforce competitors, you're just a bit behind, and could step it up a bit for the kind of county you are. We looked at income, again, look at the state. The green means you're doing great, you can just, yellow is flashing light, why don't you look at it? And red is you're below average. So not a lot of reds, quite a few greens, some yellows. So this income, this is skills, where we looked particularly was credential attainment. Something, something's great one year after, but something really slides five years after for kids in Cobb County, in terms of getting a degree. And we know in this workforce, you need some kind of training when you graduate from high school. Certificate Associate, some kind of training. Housing burden, there you can see there. Families, children, incomes, poverty rate, so you can see there the comparison. Obviously, Fairfax County is doing great in poverty rate.
I don't understand how Gwinnett could be thirty-four percent being the green, and we're at twenty-three percent, which is lower, and we're in the red.
Depends, so.
Housing burden.
Which dataset were you looking at?
Says housing burden, households spending greater or equal to thirty percent of household income of housing costs, all right? Twenty-three percent of ours are doing it, and we're in the red. Gwinnett has thirty-four percent, and they're in the green. What am I missing?
I think you're right.
And the state is thirty-two percent, and they're in the green. Actually, we're lower than everybody on this chart.
Yeah, I think we have a mistake. And this is seventeen data. I will have to go back and look at it. I will get you an explanation for that. Thank you. We may have, in all the transfers of the slides to PowerPoint, messed up the color coding, which can happen when you're transferring slides from lots of places, but I will get back to you on that. Thank you. Health, we looked at ER visits, population under sixty-five without insurance. Again, mostly yellows there, with some things to look at. So nonprofit landscape, next, I'm moving on. We were asked to look at duplication. I think all of you that get invited to fundraisers get, understand, there are a lot of nonprofits out there. The duplication issue, we found out, is particularly complicated. So first, particularly in the food area, if you have to walk, no transportation to get services, you're going to have hyper-local services. Churches have food banks. They are spread out through all kinds of communities. We have a trend where you have a number of small and emerging nonprofits that are meeting unmet needs. They talk about they're from the community, of the community, they're very small, but emerging. And then we have cultural, ethnic communities that are designing their own nonprofits in response to the large nonprofits, not necessarily meeting their needs. The second issue here, we, we asked a lot about collaboration. And actually, we found collaboration is code. Yes, we make referrals. That doesn't really mean we work with each other. So lots of agencies making lots of referrals to them. But a referral is, I just give you a card with a number, or a name, or somebody to call. A partnership or collaboration means we're going to solve something together. We found very few, in fact, we only found one organization that's really, really good at collaboration, and working with all the small, emerging guys you have in this county, and that was Sweetwater. What we found is you have this gap, and I'll show you in a minute. You have a few large organizations, like nine or ten, and lots of teeny guys in the county. You lack what we call a middle market in the nonprofit sector. Sort of those that have enough infrastructure to do a good job, but not so big, they become rule-bound and traditional, we call them legacy nonprofits. So all the large nonprofits in this county are located in Marietta, and if you remember the maps, you got a bunch of things, poverty's in that south part of the county, where there aren't a lot of services. So here's the map, this is IRS data. So total Cobb-based nonprofits was thirty-five hundred. You take out those without assets, you take them, income greater than fifty thousand, income greater than five hundred thousand, income greater than a million. You've got thirty-nine that have more than a million, but then if you take NTE codes, really human services only, there are nine. And that's having an NTE code. The IRS also makes mistakes, and if you don't put the code in, we're not going to capture you, but this is what we can find by the data. Okay, so highest needs in the survey of nonprofits, they said housing, transportation, children and youth development. Given growing population of aging individuals, only seventeen percent serve seniors, going to need to grow. Forty-five percent serve kids, youth or adolescents, so middle school and above would be the youth at thirty-eight percent. Areas served, so here are those that are specific to parts of Cobb, serve all of Cobb. Multiple counties, your largest group there are the multiple counties. You have a lot of partnerships or joint agencies with Douglas that do both, and a few with Gwinnett. So here, recommendations, so three, impact. So homeless kids, we suggest adopting an outcome approach of X percent of kids, five or six outcomes, reading level, grade level, things you can actually measure, mobility level, and trying to address those through an impact approach. Have nonprofits meet, or school systems partner, and try and work with nonprofits and churches in order to get that up and to reduce the number of homeless kids. We think there needs to be a funding pool, so I did a lot of work for Governor Deal around the issue of two-generation. He really believed, and I wish he was around an extra year to take it deeper. He really believed that you couldn't just work with the kids over here, or just over here in workforce, work with the parents. He thought it was a two-generation, you work with both of them, and that's where you get the true impact. And he, I facilitated, he brought together tech schools, he brought together the daycare centers, he brought together diverse groups, worked with kids, worked with adults. You got to work together, two-generation, and collaborate better. We think you have opportunities here, if there was a funding pool, to get agencies to work differently with the family and solve the family's problems, which is really what causes a homeless kid. And Governor Deal brought in experts, there's, he had a website, there's a lot of information about best practice on this. Invest, we think you have the opportunity to invest in these smaller, emerging market nonprofits. You have these few big guys, these emerging ones are truly feeling need in the community, but they don't have the infrastructure they necessarily need to be successful and to obtain impact. Initiate, which I call convening. So governments have a huge opportunity, and so does the Community Foundation, to convene on issues. We think the community ought to start talking about aging care. I called it senior again, sorry. So this aging in place, and how particularly the middle old and the old old in this county, because we do have a birthday every year. You're going to need services, those folks are going to age in place. There are too many baby boomers for assisted living, independent living, it isn't going to happen unless you turn every mall that ever existed into care for seniors. So it's aging in place is the current thing. So how do seniors in your communities age in place? They're going to need home care, they're going to need services, they're going to need a whole different kind of transportation system. Huge opportunity for community dialogue and planning about what that looks like as this happens over the next fifteen years. Second opportunity is workforce. So we talked to a lot of employers, a number of them have already started sending vans down to the martyr station in Atlanta, particularly the arts martyr station, to pick up low-wage employees and bring them to the county. That workforce, because you've got hospitality, you've got manufacturing, and you've got health care. That requires workers of a certain pay scale that cannot live in this county. Workforce housing is a term that it's used. We think you have an opportunity to maybe initiate some public-private partnerships. You have convening power in order to bring together those developers, there are tax credits for them, the opportunities, again, to express this issue. For the Community Foundation, we talked about a moving-the-needle campaign. How about fifty percent of the kids attend pre-K? Fifty percent of the kindergartners achieve developmental benchmarks. Fifty percent of the third graders read at grade level. Fifty percent of the eighth graders are proficient in math. We said the school mobility rate should average fourteen percent or lower. That's a good statewide average, yours is higher than that. And then, again, two-generation, which I already talked about. We think those are opportunities for a foundation to look at funding. We think for the county, this planning, I'm sure you're aware from your planners, having been a chief of staff or mayor and run a city, I know you plan ten and twenty years out, so your master plans can take into account where these folks are going to live and age in place. Transportation, I worked extensively in Sandy Springs with the Benson Center in Fulton County. County. They've gone to an Uber approach to get all their seniors in for their classes in their senior centers, saving them hundreds of thousands of dollars in their transportation program in Fulton County. Affordable housing, I suggest you approach from workforce housing. Not only do your police officers and your teachers need a place to live, but your hospitality industry, manufacturing industry, and healthcare industry need places to live. And we have it tracked by census tract. Thank you. Questions? I tried to talk as fast as I could. Yes. And I, we are working on a full report, which is actually has eighty-some slides in it where you can dive deeper. We cut this down, but yes, we will make them available. And then we have an interactive map where you can point your clicker on every census tract and get four sets of data, workforce, health, housing, and education. And that will be live in a few weeks. Yes, we will.
Has this been presented to any of the school boards, or cities, or any other partnerships?
You're our first. We thought we should come to you first. You are the county.
Well, there's a lot of school educational information.
Yes.
You know, I think the school boards, Marietta and Cobb would be interested in seeing that as well.
Absolutely. But when we went down the list to decide where we needed to start, we felt that this was the forum where we needed to present these results for the very first time. We are presenting them to all of the nonprofits who participated in the study on Thursday. And we are working with the school systems to find when we can come and present to them, as well as to various cities, the various cities in Cobb County. I'm sorry, go ahead. We had extensive input from the school system. They provided some of the data for us, and we reviewed the data with them. So they're well aware of many parts of this. And as far as what we, a Cobb Community Foundation, are doing with this, first, as you know, this was a joint effort of the Community Foundation, United Way, as well as the Cobb Collaborative. And we are working together to define what is, how we are going to distribute the grant monies this year. I can tell you, although we don't have the details specifics yet, we are focusing geographically on those areas that were consistently in red and dark orange. We're also focusing on services that are targeting the families and the literacy issues in those areas, and then all of the other services that if not provided, it doesn't really matter what we're doing to target literacy. So we're focusing on a few key areas geographically, also in terms of services being provided. We're planning on awarding grants in August and are currently refining what we're doing. But we felt that it was important, when we are accepting donor money, we have a responsibility to make sure that we are making the greatest impact that we can with this. That's the results, that's the study. So, thank you very much.
Our second presentation is from the Cobb Marietta Coliseum and Exhibit Hall Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jerry Nixon. I chair the Authority Board. We appreciate you and the commissioners having us here today to present our case on the extension of the hotel motel tax. We're grateful to be here. I just want to know that Ms. Keely, when she kept talking about the old, old people, she kept turning around looking at me. Right. But again, we have a group that's here today representing the authority and the friends of the authority. And I'd like to, if it's all right, just introduce them, ask them to stand up as a group. Will all the Authority Board members please stand? Thank you. And then also the Cobb Travel and Tourism, which is a byproduct of all of this, and Cobb Travel and Tourism Board is well represented here today as well. Thank you very much. We also have Attorney Kevin Moore is here, and I don't know if our bond counsel, Matt, is here. And we also, the Cobb Chamber's representatives, Sharon Mason and Mitch, who just got the promotion of his life by turning over the chairmanship to someone else Saturday night. And we have the new chairman, John Loud is here. And also, we've got the mayors here. Mayor Tomlin is on there, and Derek Norton, the mayor of Smyrna, is on the board as well. But they're in session in state legislature now, and Derek was unable to make it today. And also Tommy Allen Good from McWorth is here. Tommy, we appreciate you coming. We have some folks from the hotel here as well, and this has a direct impact on them. We have Gary Hughes and John Hill from the Renaissance Waverly right there next to us. Guys, thank you for coming. And then on the Cobb Travel and Tourism Board is also Devin Heath is here and representing Embassy Suites. But again, we thank each of you for letting us come today, and also, and will have a part on the program at a later date, as Governor Roy Barnes will speak on our behalf. But at this point, I'll turn it over to Bob Boil. Bob is the vice chair of the Authority Board, and Bob has chaired the Real Estate Committee for almost ten years now. We couldn't run this authority without Bob and his background, the expertise, and the time and effort that he commits to it. So Bob, if you'll come up at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you fellow commercialers for giving us your time today. We really appreciate all of that. And I appreciate what you do, sitting up here and serving the citizens of Cobb County. Congratulations, Kelly, on your one-year anniversary. And so we, we are grateful. I serve, as you know, as the Board of Commissioners representative on this board, and I've served for sixteen years, and actually chaired the Real Estate Committee for that, that long a time. I'm a Cobb resident, thirty-two years in Cobb. My business is located here, and I love this county. So it's a pleasure to serve on your behalf on this board. So we are here today to talk about the hotel motel tax extension. And just, just as, a couple of quick backgrounds for people here. The enabling legislation was put in place by nineteen eighty by then a very young Senator Roy Barnes. And several of his colleagues, including Johnny Isaacson, did a magnificent thing for the county, showed great leadership, and set this authority up. It's a component unit of Cobb County, and its operations are reflected on the county's financial statements. We run four specific entities. The Cobb Galleria Center, our convention facility, the Galleria Specialty Shops, the Arts Bridge Foundation, which affects over thirty thousand students every year on behalf of the foundation, and the Cobb Energy Performing Arts Center, which opened in two thousand seven. As you know, our authority also was used to issue the bonds for Sun, SunTrust Park, which opened two years ago, but that is managed by others. Jerry already mentioned who's on our board. And a lot of people ask the question, where does the revenue come that runs our authority? And it comes from two sources. About fifty-three, fifty-four percent of it comes from operating revenue from the Galleria Center, and from, also from the Convention Center, and the, I mean, the Performing Arts Center. And then the forty-six percent comes from, from intergovernmental revenue, which consists of the hotel motel tax and liquor-by-the-drink. So how does this work? As you know, the county, we collect the hotel motel tax, and a portion of those taxes go to each of the cities, and a portion goes to the county. And you, the formula is set up there on the screen. And the county, even though its share is thirty-seven and a half percent, still collects on a net basis ninety-two percent of the total revenue that is collected under the hotel motel tax that is shared with the municipalities in the county. And over the last, since it, since it was put in place, that, that amounts to over a hundred million dollars that's come to the county specifically. Under, the little chart up on the upper right talks about how, shows how the two sources, liquor-by-the-drink and hotel motel tax, go to a bond trustee. It is paid, debt service is paid on the bonds, and then it goes over into an operating revenue fund where it is combined with our Convention Center operating revenues, and then goes out and is paid for the various expenses that are related to that. And then at the end of that, the remaining portion goes into a renewal and expansion fund. Down at the bottom, it talks, that shows you the different bonds that we have outstanding right now. The latest expires for the Performing Arts Center in two thousand twenty-nine. How are we doing? And I think, I think that's the, the good question for us to ask. The hotel, since, since the Galleria opened, the Convention Center opened, and later the Cobb Energy Center, we have had, by all economic development measuring statistics, over two and a half billion dollars worth of positive impact to the county over twenty-five years. That amounts to, on an average, of a hundred million dollars a year. Last year alone, that contribution on those metrics was a hundred and thirty-seven million and a hundred and seventy-six million to the total state. So it's a big source of economic benefit to the state. Other thing is that if you look over in the lower right box, it shows you that we've had over fourteen million visitors come to Cobb. And most of those folks are not necessarily residents of Cobb County. On the next slide, we'll show you that, looking over at the pie chart, that the Cobb portion is twenty-one percent of our total ticket sales at the Cobb Energy Center, which means that out of those nine million dollars or so of revenues that are coming in from the sale, that most of those revenues, the lion's share, are coming from outside the county. The other thing I wanted to point out, if you look at, on an awards basis, and I, it sounds like we're tooting our own horn here, but I wanted to compliment our staff because literally both the Convention Center and the Cobb Energy Center have won major awards throughout their entire operation, years of operation. And then the other thing that is exciting, as a resident of metro Atlanta, is, is that we are now, the Cobb Energy Center is now home to the Atlanta Ballet, the Atlanta Opera, and this year, because of Michelle's and her team's hard work, the Nutcracker. We'll have it hosted right here in Cobb County. So, you know, on those metrics, we, we've done very well. So why do we need to renew these, the HMT? As you know, the bonds, the, the funding agreements are set to expire on October second of two thousand twenty-eight, when those Convention Center bonds are paid in full. And as you know, we actually are celebrating this year the twenty-fifth anniversary of the operation of the Convention Center. The, and without extending those bonds, we cannot produce any, we can't produce or borrow any money to further make improvements to our facility. Right now, if you look at our competing projects, Cobb has consistently performed at top of class for comparable Convention Center facilities, but we have many competitors who are gaining on us with newer facilities. And so part of the purpose of this new bonds, and I'll show you, these images here are, represent the proposed improvements that we would make with the exclusion of the hotel tower. We would be doing all the improvements around getting the stage set for that new hotel facility. The, in addition to that, we would be renovating the entire Convention Center facility itself, and all of the parking decks and other facilities, which are now, in some cases, twenty-eight to thirty years old, and we've been keeping, operating all this time. If we don't renew the funding agreements, is that we won't be able to, we won't be able to issue any new bonds for any, any new facilities. And our infrastructure, which has, has held up very, very well, we've kept, kept that in place, and I'm proud again of our staff for what they've done there, will continue to deteriorate, or will, will in fact deteriorate. So what are our recommendations? Because we know, you know, the facilities now have been successful. We, we actually, the operating revenues from the facilities had more than covered our operating expenses from the first day both facilities opened, the Convention Center and Cobb Energy. And so what we're proposing to the county as part of a, a recommendation that we would bring, hopefully, to the commission this next month, is a reduction in the liquor-by-the-drink tax. Currently, we share that fifty-fifty with the county, that we would reduce our share to twenty-five percent. That would amount to about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar net increase in annual revenue to the county. The second thing is that we have some junior bonds, about seven or eight million dollars of that, that we would wrap into a new bond issue. That would save the county several hundred thousand dollars, somewhere shy of a half million dollars, and we would do that as part of a new bond issue. On the HMT waterfall, currently, the way the legislation is set up is that the HMT tax guarantees our operating costs for both the Convention Center and the Performing Arts Center. We're willing to take that out of that equation. So in other words, we would be responsible for funding all of those and guaranteeing the operation of those facilities ourselves. The bonds would solely be responsible, or would be pledged, for the payment of whatever bond issue is, is done. And then last, we do believe that the HMT pledge of a hundred percent of our debt service is critical to maintaining our credit rating, and therefore, lower interest rate on the bonds. So those are the recommendations. Now, let me go to a little bit. You say, well, what are you going to propose to use this money for? And what we're showing here on Addendum One is a listing of the proposed improvements that we're going to be making. And it amounts to about a hundred and thirty million dollars, plus or minus. This has been prepared by Brassfield and Gorey, and our construction managers, Darden and Company, and is based on schematic drawings. These are illustrations of what we would be proposing that are here in front of you. Part of that is campus infrastructure, part of it is the renovation, and actually, the conversion of what is currently the two-story mall, the Galleria Specialty Shops, into additional meeting space, and opening that entire area up adjacent a new hotel facility. So the, here's the same images that you all are seeing in front of you. There, there have been questions asked as to what have we used the reserve funds for? And this Addendum Two shows exactly what those funds have been used for since we opened the facility. It's been shy of thirty million dollars, but it's all gone back into capital and maintenance issues for our facilities, keeping them first-class. The second, or the Addendum Three shows the payments that have been made to the county and the cities since the hotel motel tax was put in place. And as I mentioned earlier, Cobb has received over a hundred million dollars in the hotel motel tax over its twenty-five years. The last thing, and I think this is one that we would probably spend some time on, and we'd like to engage our staff to work with the county staff, to look at if we start changing the formula. What we've done is that we've showed the impact, based on our two thousand eighteen numbers, of what would happen if you reduce, under Scenario One, that split from sixty, sixty-two and a half to sixty percent, the impact that it would have on our, on the surplus and deficit that ends up going into the reserve accounts. You can see if we, as we're proposing, if you take liquor-by-the-drink off the table, it drops by four hundred thousand dollars. And then Scenario Two, if you reduce it to forty percent, in other words, going that, it reduces, it takes almost another nine hundred, a total nine hundred thousand dollars off. I'm running out of voice here. Scenario Three shows that if we went to a fifty-fifty split, we would end up with a reserve contribution at the end of the year at four hundred thousand, and that's versus the current model, which has it at two-point-nine million. Now, when you look at the numbers... Now, when you look at the numbers in red, what we then did was look at the commission, the, the era between 2009 and 2011. And a lot of us who lived through that know what happened to revenues during that time. And the, and the revenues for the authority dropped by 15%. So what we did is go back and look at each of these scenarios, if you added, under a stress case, collections dropping by an additional 15%. And it shows you that if we go all the way to a 50/50 revised split, we'd be, we'd be losing money, we'd lose a million dollars a year out of our operating revenue account. So, hopefully that gives you some perspective about when, what happens when we start changing the formula. One other thing, an unintended consequence of delaying this, this process, is that Mayor Tomlin's here from Marietta, but they also operate a convention facility, and their ability to, well, thank you. They, it, it will inhibit their, it, right now, it's actually inhibiting their ability to enter into long-term management and other contracts for their hotel facility. So, there are a lot of reasons for wanting to try and push this process forward. A couple of other slides, we want to know, that, want you to know that from a countywide perspective, the, the authority takes its responsibilities very seriously. In Arts Bridge, the educational outreach which they've done over, since 2008, so in 12 years, they've, they've served over 380,000 students and educators. It's a pretty remarkable achievement. And then that we had some testimonials for you. So, I wanted to just finish my comments by just saying thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this, be glad to answer any questions either now, or we would like to ask Senator, excuse me, former Governor Roy Barnes, to come up and, and give a little background on the, the original creation of this, the authority.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I want to give you a little history on how all of this came here. The orig, there was an old authority that was created in Cobb County back when we were rural in the 60s, called the Cobb Exposition and Agricultural Authority. And it had the authority, or had the power granted to it to build an agricultural exposition authority in the county. It was never put into effect, but it was on the books. And when, really, three people, John Williams, Johnny Isaacson, and I, all decided in the late 70s that the county needed a convention center if we were ever going to become what we are now. And that is the primary destination in the metro Atlanta area and a financial center that we needed to get ahead of this. We create, John and I were both in the General Assembly, and I handled, it was my bill in the House, and then to the, went to, I was in the Senate, Johnny was in the House at the time, and I handled it in the Senate, and sent it to Johnny, and we passed it. The problem that existed was, the county commission was not willing, and they were going through, remember, we had a recession in 82 during that period of time. They didn't think they could, and this was before SPOST. If we'd had SPOST, we would have, that was another project that we had later with Earl Smith. We drew the bill over at my office one afternoon. But in the late eight, in the late 80s and early 90s, John Williams was coming up on one of his terms as Chamber President. And he called me one night, he says, can you and Johnny figure out a way to fund this deal? And what we, I said was, I said, we went to the county commission, here's what the commission's position was at the time. As long as we keep the hotel motel tax we got now, which was, by the way, 2% was what it was, we will go along with y'all and give you all of the money from the increase to build this facility. And so, I was out of office, I had a little illness, the folks got tired of me and beat me, and so I was out for two years. And I drew a bill that, that increased the hotel motel tax over what it was. And then Johnny and I went to every city, and we went to them, listen, we need your increase to build this facility. And we went to the county, the county was already on board. And that is how we built this facility. That is, that the increase would all go, 100%, the increase over the 2% would all go to this facility so that we could build it. When I constructed the bond deal with it, I put three years of operating cost into it because we nev, there'd never been a facility that had broken even in less than three years, and I needed some way to sink the debt, and also some way to operate it till it became profitable. Well, when we built it, it was profitable the first years Bob's told you about. And so it has been wildly successful. And from that, of course, came the Performing Arts Center and what we have there now. That was the deal. The increase went to the board, went to the authority. And order, just to do what they're doing now, and that is stay ahead of the competitors, because we knew when we were, when we were the first of the metro counties to do it, we knew if we did it, the rest of them would start copying us, and they have. And the main competition, of course, you've got, you know, down at College Park, you've got that facility, but you also have the one downtown that has been expanded, the World Congress Center. So I guess the pitch I have to you today is, don't kill the goose that's laying the golden eggs. And the, and as the commission said at the time that we sold them to us, listen, we'll let you have all the increase in the hotel motel tax, because it is no question a permitted purpose. And we had to amend the law, really by a population statute, to say that we could use this money to build it, because it is directly affecting, goes directly to, to the purpose of the hotel motel tax, and that is to provide tourism. Hotel motel ca, tax cannot be used except to provide tourism and to help with tourism. That was a whole purpose that was put in, and in fact, the statute says that. So it cannot be used for a general purpose. And the deal was struck, the deal has made money, the deal has brought prosperity, and I ask you to stick to the deal that your predecessors made. Thank you.
Governor, can I ask you a couple of questions?
You may.
Could we go to the slide that has the breakdown of percentages?
If you think I can read that, you're sadly mistaken.
So are you like, are you like middle old, young old, or old old?
Listen, look at my hair, mine's turned white and loose, so.
Okay. I'm, I'm curious, I'm curious as to the percentages.
Yeah.
That were, that were agreed upon between the cities and the counties. Were these the original percentages that are agreed upon? It says Acworth 62.5%, along with Ostel and Akkensaw, Marietta gets 80%, Powder Springs, and Smyrna gets 62.5%.
Yeah.
And then we get 37. So, were those, were those the percentages that were agreed on back in the 90s?
Nope. Here's what happened back in the 90s.
Okay.
They had the same deal that y'all had. I didn't need any of the other cities except the city of Marietta. Because at that time, Ostel, Smyrna, Kenasaw, they were producing no tax. I mean, it was very little. I think that the, Ostel's tax was less than 10,000 at the time, but I needed them to, to, in order to do the deal. Marietta was the only one I needed. And we had extended negotiations with Marietta about it, and the, and Joe McWilson was mayor, and it almost blew the deal. And what we finally said was, they wanted to build a conference center. We didn't want to run it, because we, we had questions about it at the time. But we did strike a deal with them to give them an extra amount. They took part of the increase. They took, none of the other cities or the county took any of the increase. The city of Marietta took part of the increase and built the conference center that's up where the Old Country Club is. The count, what's happened now is, that has switched. The cities still don't have, except for Marietta and now Smyrna, the last time I looked at it, do not have the contributions that the county does. And it's primarily because this facility was built, because it attracted all of that hotel and motel and all of that in there, where it created a greater percentage of money that was being collected. And that's how they built the Performing Arts Center, is because it was extra money that was done. But the original deals with the city was, and the counties, they didn't get anything of the increase. Now y'all, since that time, y'all have negotiated with it, and y'all get, you know, a percentage of the total rather than just keeping the original. But I guess that, if that answers your question.
Yes, sir, I was just curious about the percentages.
That's, that's how it did. I drew all of the contracts with the cities. I drew all the contracts with the cities. But the point I want to make is, this cannot be used for general funds.
Right.
Can't be used, my, my view, for parks. I mean, that is not a tourism. And I think if somebody objects to it, that you're going to lose that, but now, that's an unsolicited unpaid, and I ca, I am subject to being hired and change my name.
Yeah, I was, I was waiting for the, I was waiting for the pitch. Thank you, Governor. Anybody else have any questions to the Governor? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate you coming today. So Bob, or Jerry, or Connie, or Michelle, or all of you, want to, in case we have any questions from the board, whoever's going to answer the questions.
First off, again, thank you for letting us come, and we'll be glad to come and meet with you individually. I don't think we're asking for any action specifically on, I haven't proposed anything, we've just given you an outline of.
Well, well, I think we should have some questions, though, so, since you offered to stand up here.
Sure.
So let's go to, I think, slide 14. That had the breakdown, nope, I'm sorry, the previous one, there you go. All right. So if I read this chart correctly, and I really appreciate you breaking down these So all things being equal, and we all know that the economy goes up and down, all right? I'm not saying that it'll always be, you know, it'll always have the kind of time we're having right now. But scenario number three, still reflects, if I read this correctly, that if we went to a 50/50% 50/50 split between the county and, and the, and the board, you're still projecting a $400,000 surplus. Is that correct?
Assuming that there are, there's no downturn.
Right.
And it also, as you know, because the capital improvements, or really just maintenance improvements on facilities like we have, come in big lumpy amounts. You know about replacing the HVAC systems on the roof after a period of time. So we will have, you know, we could have a $4 million cost like we've had in the last few years of some of our older facilities, and if you're only putting 400,000 in there under the best-case scenario, that's, that's not good stewardship, in my opinion.
But I also assuming that you do, like we do, we have fund balance, you have reserves to, to get ready for rainy days?
Yes, but this is what's funding those reserves. Yes, sir.
Okay. So. Sure.
So what are your current reserves?
I'm sorry.
What is your current reserves?
Right now, we are holding 19 million dollars in those reserves. We've, we've been fortunate with the increase in the HMT over these last few years. We do have nearly 50% of that earmarked for a parking deck facility that will be built in conjunction with the, on the Performing Arts Center property as part of a new facility, hotel facility that would be done on, on that site, on the Performing Arts Center site. So in other words, if we follow through with our current projected capex for 2020, our reserve number will drop down, assuming we have similar collections, probably to about 12 million.
So do you see a scenario that if you went, if you went to scenario three, just because this works, you know, works, it's the most extreme case, that you would not be able to pay your obligations, any loan obligations?
It would tax whatever reserves would, would go first that are in the account. So if we had reserves in, under that scenario, if we had reserves in our funds, they would go and tap those first, and then beyond that, we would not be able to meet our obligations. That's correct.
And the obligations are because of your capital improvement program or other obligations?
Because of the capital improvements program. Again, we're prepared to take the operating revenue backstop off the table.
Well, here, here's, here's my, one of my thoughts. When the Governor and Senator Isaacson and John Williams put this package together, there were X number of hotels in Cobb County. And I would assume that, that the number of hotels that were here drove what the percentages would be. Here we are, almost 30 years later, we have a lot more hotels. I, I look at the monthly hotel motel tax result that's given to us by the staff. I don't, I'm trying to figure out why it is that, given that we have a, we have more hotels, why you still need the same percentage of collection? Because you have, you have a greater number of revenue streams than you did before. Because it seems to me that we get into the same situation that government can be, can be criticized for, is that if you give us the money, we'll find a way to spend it. Okay? And I think some people could argue, well, we have, I'm gonna say probably 100 hotels, motels in Cobb County, I could be somewhere around that number. If you're getting 62.5% from Cobb County for a greater hotels, why do you need more money when you're going to be renovating existing resources, plus building a hotel?
Well, I, you know, again, this is a question, in my view, of taking a more progressive look at the future and whether the county wants to operate a 30-year-old convention center facility which needs a lot of renovation, or you just need to drive around and look at our competitive set, and you can see that. Or do we want to reinvest in that? And you know the issues from sitting on the board about the challenges we have with our parking decks, and even the interior facilities. And so, we can, yes, as a board, you can choose, this is, this is your decision, do you want to, and we've shown what we would be proposing, which I think is a handsome upgrade, kind of bringing us a 21st century view and, and perspective to our facilities, which, by the way, our customers are telling us, you know, that they would, that they want to see us do some of these things, that it would benefit them greatly. And so, if we choose not to do that, we, we're not going to fall apart overnight, but we will slowly, you know, over time. You know what it's like when, when you were in the service, when you delay maintenance and you defer maintenance, and yes, you can keep the same things running, but you, it's not going to be at the same level or at the same quality that you had before. or at the same quality that you had before.
Well, I think the other thing, and I'm just sort of speaking as, hopefully, from the man on the street, it appears to be the negotiating range is somewhere between 62.5% and 50%, okay? Because we've been having discussions now for about a year about this issue. Is that timeframe about right, Bob? Because Commissioner Rott was handling this issue for a long period of time. And now it's back here at the board. He understands why you need 62.5%. I want to bear upfront about that, okay? And I've talked about this. He understands where you're coming from and your 62.5%. I have members of the board here that are saying 50% is something that appears reasonable to them, but they didn't have all the facts like they do to.
And give that back. And we also have a bond issue that's going to get paid off in 2029 that will net another $3 million annually to the county that you will not have to pay for. Because all the improvements that we're talking about would be funded out of the HMT. And if that's the decision, it will restrict substantially our ability to compete on a first-class basis. That's my opinion.
Okay. But I also understand is that we are still obligated paying you the 62.5% to 2024, right?
2028.
2028, so.
Till the bonds are retired.
Right, so anywhere, so any extension of this wouldn't affect that formula until 2028, right? Any modification of the percentage?
Well, but it also restricts our ability to do any improvements. It basically hamstrings us, hamstrings the mayor with his facility because we can't go forward. That's correct.
Well, we aren't affecting his percentage.
No, but I mean not coming to an agreement.
Oh, I get that part. No, that's what I'm saying. We need to, we need to, we need to come to an agreement here.
Right.
I'm trying to find something here that, you know, we can talk about here at the board. All right, hopefully, I'm waiting for them to join here in this conversation right now.
Well, I don't, honestly, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I mean, I don't look at this as a horse trading exercise. I look at this as, you know, if we haven't been good stewards, then that's one thing. We have, I mean, everything, every intergovernmental award for accounting, I mean, we have done everything that the county asks us to do. And we have a great facility. And we have a facility which serves the county, serves the region, collects most of the revenue from people coming into Cobb County. This is not a tax on the citizens of Cobb County. Maybe if they're using the hotels, which you have to ask yourself about that, that's another question locally. No laughter. But, you know, if we, if there's a reason for doing that other than just saying that, you know, that was then and this is now, we can, you all can make that choice. But I think it would be, it would not be consistent with what I think was the original objectives. And what we as an authority have is our objectives, to continue to make this a best-in-class facility.
Commissioner Burley, you have a point?
Yeah. Okay. On Scenario 1, would our, the 37.5% stay the same?
Yes, ma'am. That just shows that we would be changing Liquor by the Drink down. Scenario 2 shows where we would reduce the contribution by just 2.5%. In other words, the county share would go up to 40 and ours would go down to 60. And you can see, under that scenario, even just that small tweaking has a half-million-dollar impact on collections for us. That would be an additional half million to the county.
Right. And then the bonds that don't expire until 2028, if we went with 1, 2, or 3 here, it wouldn't go into effect until then?
That is correct.
So we can't change anything anyway?
Well, but what we're asking is to go ahead and reset the table so that we would have the ability on the county's behalf to make the major improvements that would need to be bonded going forward in the future. So that's why we're asking if we can go do this now.
You need a 30-year window.
Yes, sir.
And then the new scenario, whichever one is agreed upon, if any of these three would be for how many years' term?
I think we're proposing through 2055. Is that right?
2053.
So.
2053. 53?
Yes, 35-year bonds.
Well, my opinion is, first of all, I know we don't want to go below the 37.5% because we have obligations with the stadium and debts that we have to pay with that. But I'd like to look at this in more detail and also maybe look at some other percentages in between. And get with our legal and bond counsel.
Commissioner Campbell?
Okay. I have a couple of different questions for you. So on the liquor by the drink tax, I know on the hotel motel one, it can only be used towards the Galleria, the Energy Center. But the liquor by the drink, is there any restrictions on the use of that?
Good question. There's no restrictions, to my knowledge. None restrict, no restrictions.
So what that means to the board is that wouldn't be restricted as far as where we could use that funding? My second question, I thought it was interesting that Waverly and then Embassy Suites, was it? Are here with us today as well? Because if you construct or have this new hotel constructed, how is that going to impact the Waverly? And what are we looking at happening to the Waverly if this new hotel comes on board?
Well, that, yeah, that's also a great question. Because one of our biggest problems right now is that it is hard for us to book large books of business because the Waverly's been very successful on its own in terms of booking their own business. And so one of the reasons to have a privately owned and operated, more captive facility within our area is to give us a better chance at securing room blocks for these type of events. The Waverly, Embassy Suites, all of them are going to benefit because we have the halo effect that comes from when you do these larger facility events.
Okay, and while we have the halo effect, we also know the Waverly is an older building.
Right.
Are they going to be looking to remodel, update, and are they going to be looking for funds to do such?
Well, they, to my knowledge, I think it's all public, that Eastill Secured, which is an investment sales firm here in Atlanta, is in the process of selling the Waverly Hotel. Excuse me, and the new owners, we know if they do go forward, will probably be investing $20, $25 million of private capital into that facility. Because the Waverly itself is also, I don't want to say long in the tooth, but it needs to be, the rooms need to be renovated, serious renovations.
That would be private.
Right, and even though I know it was going to be private, I didn't know if somehow this was going to get tied into the rest of this. That's why I was asking. That's all I have.
Right.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes. I don't think any of us would argue that travel and tourism is our top economic driver in the county. And it's important for us to ensure the strength of our assets that have allowed us to do well in that arena. I think we can inject maybe a little bit more creativity here. And I appreciate the different scenarios that were provided. But my concerns today are probably, not probably, they are the same as the concerns that I expressed when we met in private and that I've had with our attorneys. I didn't have the history that Governor Barnes shared about the evolution of the authority and the support for the two main assets that we have in the Cumberland area. But I am concerned about current conditions and how we move forward with how we view investment in travel and tourism, not just in those two assets, but across the county. As I shared with you, I think the creation of the current authority focused on the development of the Galleria and the Performing Arts Center. And it has shown itself to be worthwhile with all of the added infrastructure in that area. But as we support, you know, the goose in that area laying its golden eggs, we have areas that have no eggs being produced. And I'm concerned about how we look at economic equity across this county. I serve on the Travel and Tourism Board. And even prior to joining, you know, Dale Kettel has talked about when his hotel was coming to Six Flags and the over $300 million economic impact that he has to the entire county. And I just don't see these conversations broad enough to look at the economic opportunity for the entire county. And I think for us to make a decision that binds us beyond perhaps any of our lifetimes, that at some point, we should offer some flexibility in regard to how we do that. And if we continue even to invest more with some of the options shared, it still provides overwhelming uneven equity from not only the dollars that areas will get, but that they have not gotten since the creation of this program. And I sit in many of our agenda meetings where we have different considerations for bonds. I'm not, I'm not a, you know, my area of expertise is not in governmental finance. But I've got to think we can be creative to figure out how we support what you want to do, what we all think needs to be done, really, with these two assets. And think about the economic vitality across this county. I mean, we just sat here in a presentation about disparity in the county. And a point that I think was driven home was looking at where the needs are and where we've invested our dollars and how you match those dollars to where there is need. And if you continue to put our money in entities that don't spread across where there's need, that you're just going to see that divide grow more. I know you would be limited in looking at Scenario 3. But with that, I see additional opportunity to perhaps invest in areas that haven't received it. But then I also just talked to Rob briefly on the side to say, we've got to look at other sources. There's got to be other ways for us to perhaps address that gap through other funding mechanisms. And so, you know, I'll talk to our finance offline and to see how we can be a little bit more creative about this because, you know, there's investment opportunity mess. But then I think binding future boards, we just discussed with our stepping grade proposal, our concern about binding the board two to three years out. And this decision will bind us until 2053. And so I'm just, I know we've been waiting a long time and there are things you desire to do. And I think there's a reason why it's probably been delayed and want to move things forward. But I just think we need, if we're going to bind this funding source for the next 20-plus years, 30 years, that we should look at how we can make this a win across the county.
Governor Barnes? Can I get, can I get your indulgence for one second, please? Come back up to the podium. You said something that was very interesting here about how we can use the revenue.
That you receive?
Yes, and you specifically mentioned recreation.
I don't think you can use it for.
Okay, I got that part.
Yeah.
But in your young age experience.
Yes.
What are some of the things that you think that would be lawful, that would allow us to address what Commissioner Cooper's talking about? Because, you know, to put it in.
I think that of your 37.5%, I think that, you know, you could use it for a tourism facility or attraction or assistance, parking or whatever for Six Flags that you've talked about or some other facilities like that. Cobb County has an 8% total hotel motel tax. And hotel motel tax has always been a little loosey-goosey. And the state auditors generally shut their eyes to them. But the whole purpose, I was there when we put in the original. The whole purpose was that it was originally put in to fund the Atlanta ACV Convention and Visitors Bureau that a former Six Flags superintendent became the first head of. I think you can, I think you can do anything that goes, for example, advertising. I think it can go to facilities that are directly controlled with bringing people in for tourism. I do not think that you can do a, you know, once-removed. Well, if they come in, you know, do you, they may want to walk in a park. I think that's too far removed.
Okay.
I would just say that there is controlling state law about what opportunities are. So we don't have, this doesn't have to be a conversation of.
Yeah, the law is pretty clear. It has to be a direct expenditure to tourism or convention.
I was just trying to give the board some examples of what to think about here as we chew on this, you know.
Sure, sure. And you can pledge that debt, the county's part of that debt, for real facilities.
So let me ask you a specific question, then, okay?
Okay.
You know, we just renovated Jim Miller Park.
Just renovated.
We renovated Jim Miller Park.
Yes.
Would you consider that an appropriate facility that we bring in tourists to use because it comes from outside the county, that we could perhaps use some of that for?
You're getting closer. I'd have to know what the percentage is. I think definitely the convention center, the exhibit space that has been built there, yes. I don't think it can be, I think to use it for all of, use it for operations of the fair, for example. I think you're getting a little further away there.
But we could use it to advertise events.
You can. That will bring people in. There's no question you can do that. And in most places, that's kind of what they do. There's very few of them that fund convention center space.
So would it be something that would be appropriate if we wanted to reach out to you in the future using your vast experience in this area to get some idea? Because I know you love Cobb County.
Yes. I've been here all my life, and all my family has for their lives.
Well, we certainly want to hear more of your stories.
Okay. Well, I don't know about that.
Well, I appreciate.
Some of them I can't tell. Now, not everybody is dead.
I just, I mean.
Sure.
So I just want to share because this may be broad and it will be subject to legal interpretation, but, you know, according to our state law that provides funding can be provided for funding, supporting, acquiring, constructing, renovating, improving and equipping building structures, infrastructures and facilities which have the effect of promoting, attracting, stimulating and developing conventions and tourism, including but not limited to a hotel facility and infrastructure and utility projects.
Okay.
So, I mean...
Yeah, you can do it. That's the reason I, you see, the law talks about facilities and expenditures to bring them in and all that. Operating gets to be a little bit of a...
Yeah.
Sure.
It can be a problem, even though I'm in all candor now, I have seen many conference deals structured with providing some operating money. Now, they're not asking you to do that.
No, no, they're not.
Here, I mean, you know, like I say, I built in three years when I did, the original bond issues was $43 million. And when I went to Moody's to get it rated, I told the examiners, I said, if I've got enough hotel motel tax here, if I built this facility and then boarded it up and never opened it, there would be enough to sink this debt. And the fellow from Moody's says, that is all I need to do. And I said, that's all, that's the easiest way to explain it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for your time today, Governor. Okay, why don't we take a five-minute break and then we'll hear the next two presentations, all right? Thank you very much for today.
Okay, so we're back from our break. Item number three today is to receive a presentation from the Georgia Department of Transportation regarding the northern segment of I-285 in Metro Atlanta. So with that, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here today. My name is Tim Matthews. I serve as a Major Mobility Investment Program Manager for the Georgia Department of Transportation. I've been before you in the past to give you an update on what's happening with the Major Mobility Investment Program. We dub it MMIP for short. And we just wanted to give you another update because we did make some changes to the program based on some industry outreach. Wanted to give you an update on that and also answer any questions you may have. So I'll dive right in to the presentation. So we'll talk about the program as a whole. Again, we made some tweaks. We didn't change what we were going to deliver. That has not changed. We'll remind you of that. And then we'll talk about what we did with the top end express lanes and some advanced improvement projects. So just a reminder, you've seen this before. The difference between this slide and what you saw before is we now have what we call five major express lane projects where you had four listed in the past. And that's where we split the top end into two separate construction packages. I'll go into detail later what that looks like. And you'll see lots more bridge replacements on this slide here because we pulled out several projects from the bigger project and are going to advance those to construction earlier than you would normally see in the express lane projects. We'll talk about that as well. This is the map that you've seen before. It shows you where all the projects are located. Most are within the metro area. We do have several outside with the widening of 85, the commercial vehicle lane project down in 75 in Henry County, as well as two projects down near Savannah, which is under construction today. But what you have not seen in the past are those projects listed on the right-hand side, them are 13 through 18, which lists some advanced improvement projects. And I'll show you where those are located in the next slides. So this map here gives you an indication of what the express lane system looks like today and what it'll look like moving forward. Today, we have, starting with the I-25 express lane, the hot lane project, which was built several years back under operation, gives you 15 centerline miles of express lanes. We opened a couple of years ago, the I-75 Metro South Express Lanes. That gave us 27 total miles. And we also opened in your backyard, the Northwest Corridor Express Lane Project, which hopefully you've seen the fruits of that benefit as it relates to congestion on that corridor, giving us 56 total mile, 56.7 total miles of express lanes. And then we also, at that same time, opened the I-25 extension, hot lane extension on 85, giving us a total of 66.7 miles of operating express lanes in Georgia. But with the MMIP program, we're going to expand on this express lane system and we'll give you a connected system. Right now, you see it's fragmented. You've got sections that do not tie to each other. The Major Mobility Investment Program will tie all these systems together with the exception of the South Metro Express Lanes. Starting with State Route 400 Express Lane, that project, we put on RFQ next month for that project to get a developer onboard. That, once that's open, the traffic, it'll get you up to 82.8 total express lane miles. We're adding after that the I-285 top end east portion. That's the first construction package from the MARTA station at North Springs around to DeKalb County, totally 96 miles. We'll continue that down to almost I-20 on the east side with express lanes, giving you 106 total miles. And then we'll round this out on the west side, giving you, once complete and connected, 122.6 total express miles in the metro region. Because we can, we've seen in the past that these are most congested corridors. Those of you who travel on 285 see that that is our biggest problem area when it comes to congestion. So we believe this is the right solution for this problem and what we're bringing to the table. So as I mentioned earlier, we are advancing some elements out of the bigger project. The bigger projects where the express lanes on 285 on the top end, the east side and the west side, and what we are showing you here are where those projects are located. The order at which you have them there is about the order that they're going to go from a procurement perspective, but all built and open within the next two and a half to three years. So well in advance of the advanced, of the bigger projects. Some of the bigger portions of these are in the top end, at number one and number six, with some collector distributor lanes and some aux lanes. The most of the ones on the east and west, primarily in your area three and four, they're CSX Railroad, South Cobb Drive, Norfolk Southern Railroad, Bolton Road, and DL Holloway are all bridge replacements. The express lanes do not fit underneath those bridges as they are, so we've got to replace them in kinds, in kinds so we can put the express lanes underneath. So those are going to get done early. And folks have asked us why you want to get those early. Well, those of you who have worked with the railroad in the past with projects know it takes a long, long time to get that coordination complete. And when you have a billion-dollar project that a private entity is bringing the money to the table and we're paying that cost over time, which includes finance costs, any schedule delay is an impact to budget, a significant impact. So we're trying to get some of these high-risk elements done early from that perspective because it limits that risk long-term. At the same time, we have to keep over 250,000 vehicles moving a day on the west express lanes and over 350,000 on the top end moving while we're building these projects. And if we can get this work done early, it helps with maintenance of traffic when the projects are actually under construction. So that's where these are located. And I'll give you some more information a little bit later on on where you can get more information on these. And I can certainly answer questions as we move forward. This is the schedule, very similar to what you've seen before, only we've added the advanced improvement projects in the center there. We've highlighted the couple of projects that are in your area with the I-285 top end east portion and the I-285 top end west portion. We made some changes to that schedule. We reached out to the industry and they said the top end express lanes from Paces Ferry to Henderson Road is just too big. It was a five billion, over $5 billion project. Nationwide, the trend is about a $3 billion max project when it comes to design, build, finance, maintain type of contract. And they said, you're not going to get, if anybody, one entity to bid on that $5 billion job. So we needed to resize it. And at the same time, they said, you not only have this $5 billion project on this schedule, but you have three other billion-dollar projects around the same time. And again, it's an overlap that's not consistent with the industry as it relates to their going after this work. So we had to shift the schedules a little bit from a procurement perspective to stagger these so that we can get competitive industry coming after these projects. And we need that to be successful moving forward. The, and what you see here are the timeframes for when these projects are going to be open for the advanced improvement projects, open between '24 and '26, and then the top end express, as well as the west and east between '27 and '232. So just to give you a little history, a lot of people, why does it take so long to get these projects from your concept all the way to open to construction or open to traffic? And this gives you a history of what it takes to get these projects open and ultimately get them operated and maintaining them. Right now, we've got the projects programmed. We have not changed what we're delivering. We're still delivering express lanes, still delivering solution to our most congested corridors. That has not changed. But we're in project development for most, all these projects that you've seen today and in the past, including up to public information outreach meetings. And we've got several this week, two in fact here in the Galleria in Cobb County, which will wrap up our first round of PIOHs for the top end express lane project. We've got four more this week, two tomorrow and two on Thursday. I'll show you the dates a little later in the presentation.
Are we, are we recording those presentations for our Cobb TV channel?
Uh, today?
No, no, the ones, the presentations at the Galleria.
I'm doing an interview right after this with your folks so they can put it on their, their public service.
It would be nice to film so we can put it on our public television station.
And they can show up too at the public meetings. And we have a video online of the, what the project will look like and all that stuff.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. So ultimately getting us to construction, which obviously that's when the orange barrels are out there and things are getting built. And then for tolls, we have to operate the facility on a day-to-day by day basis based on demand in the system. If you look on Northwest Corridor, the prices vary based on the demand in the system. Price goes up when there's too much demand and the speeds slow down. The price goes down when the, when the demand is not there and the speeds are high where their peak is in that system. So that's basically how it works. And State Road and Tollway Authority actually operates the express lane pricing and the facility itself from that perspective. GDOT still owns the maintenance of these facilities long-term. We've done extensive, extensive outreach, similar to what we're doing today, over 300 public meetings in the past two years. That's almost a couple of week, each week. And we've, our team's been out there making sure that folks are aware of what's going on, educating them and informing them so that they're not surprised when we move forward with these projects. And these are just the few that we've visited with multiple times over the past couple of years and going to be doing even more over the next several. So diving into the express lane project, one thing to remember is this project still is one complete project from Paces Ferry to Henderson Road as far as the environmental document is concerned. It's an EIS document, the largest environmental document you do on a project. But based on the industry feedback you received over the last year, we needed to break it up into two construction packages. So environmentally, one project, the limits don't change, the scope does not change, but the time it goes to construction will, and again, because of the size of the project. So that's important to know. And we're wrapping up the first round of PIOHs today. So diving into what the each section looks like. So the first section that will go to construction is express lanes from the North Springs MARTA Station on 400 to express lanes in east direction down to the interchange at 285-400. We will weave through what they're building today and we will go east on 285 to Henderson Road. We will drop one of those express lanes at 85, will connect into the hot lane, and one will continue down to Henderson and then ultimately pick up with the east express lanes, taking it all the way down to almost I-20 on the east. So that is the first express lane project on 285 that will be constructed. The second phase will be the section from the interchange at 285-400 with two express lanes in each direction to 75. One of those express lanes will tie into the Northwest Corridor project that's open today. That's a reversible facility, so there will be times of day you can't access that based on the direction of flow on 75. But we'll continue one lane express lane down to Paces Ferry, where we'll ultimately pick up with the west side express lanes on 285, taking you almost to 20 on the west-hand side. That project, 2026 construction, 2020, 32, open to traffic. Where we're at today, as far as the schedule is concerned, we are at the public information open house process. That's where we go out to the public and show them what the current concept is. Just to give you an idea of the progress we've made over the last year and a half, we started with a concept that had over 350 or so property impacts, whether it be a small impact to even to a full displacement. Over the past year and a half, we've actually reduced that number down to about 250. Those numbers are rough, so don't quote those, those exactly, but we made able to cut around 100 or so properties out of this concept by squeezing the project in as best we can. So we believe we've done a lot of good work to minimize and avoid a lot of things that are out there. You guys know that this is a very developed corridor, all the way around 285, commercial and residential. So we have to try to minimize and avoid that where we can, which is our goal from the start. Ultimately getting us to construction around 2023 for the east express, 2026 for the west express, and everything will fall behind that as well. Here the website where you can find all the information that I talked about today, as well as some other information. That video, if you can't make it to the PIOHs, which we're having right now, we talk about the express lane, or the advanced improvement projects are shown at the PIOHs that we have today. These four that you see, or these three that you see here, because those are the ones that are going to be doing to construction first. Those will be listed at the PIOH as well. What you'll see is how the environmental process works, and you'll learn that at this meeting. You'll see concept layouts end to end, what the project looks like. You'll see the access points that we've proposed. I've shown those to you in the past. Those haven't changed on this project. Anticipated right-of-way needs, and we talk about what express lane rules and operations look like at these meetings. And we have a video of the fly-through of the 285 express lane project that gives you a good visual of what the project may look like once it's built and open to traffic. So we've already completed three meetings to the public. Those were last week. We've got four more this week, two, one at lunch tomorrow and one in the evening tomorrow night at St. Luke's Presbyterian Church off around Mount Vernon Road in Dunwoody. And then we have two more this week on Thursday, one at lunchtime and one in the evening at the Cobb Galleria. And you all know where that is. You'll get to see a lot of information and ask questions from the team at those meetings. If you, if you have time, we have a video. If you want to see the fly-through, I think you saw 400. This is, I don't want to brag onto these guys, but it's just, it's even better than that one. The ever-popular disclaimer here as well. Here we go, here we go. So this is starting you, if you look on the left-hand side, you see on the top corner, you see the red dot. That's where you're at traveling along 285. As you reach Paces Ferry Road, we're in the center because the express lanes are in the center on the west express lanes. And as we pass Paces Ferry, we start to move the express lanes to the outside. In this area, this is where we're, where we're able to reduce a lot of those right-of-way impacts by moving the express lanes to the outside. If you stay in the center, it has to be at grade and everything gets shoved out. You impact a lot more property in this area. You see an access point there at Mount Wilkinson for express lanes? The express lanes here go up an aerial and cross over 285 to the outside. You see another half-access point at Cumberland Boulevard to the express lanes? We want folks to understand what's going on. That's why it's so slow here. As you approach over Cobb Parkway, you see we're having to tie into the Northwest Corridor project. And by also making the changes we made here by going to the outside, as the previous concept, we were going to have to take out those flyover ramps that they built for the express lanes on their previous project. So under this case, we're able to keep all those flyover ramps that they built under that project in place, and we're just going to tie to them. So a significant change that helped that tie-in point in this interchange. The lavender or purple there are all the new express lanes, by the way. Reversible? That's correct. So as you, as you pass through this area, it'll start speeding up a little bit as we move towards 400. So the express lanes again are on the outside. We're going to come up near the river here. And again, we reduced the impacts to the river area significantly by this concept change that you see going to the outside here. We were able to avoid impacting a lot of these frontage roads that tie into Powers Ferry. I think we were having to relocate both of those frontage roads in the previous concept. We were able to keep those in this concept here, which is a huge impact reduction. Crossing the Chattahoochee River, you see an, an access point too and from the general purpose lanes there. This folk, this gives folks an opportunity to get out of the system before they get dumped into another system, moving west into the Northwest Corridor project. Again, to the outside over north side, New North Side, express lanes traveling eastbound. Here you're approaching another access point to and from the general purpose lanes near Raider Drive. There's Raider Drive there, going up and over Riverside Drive. They just built those roundabouts there. We don't want to tear them out. We are going under Mount Vernon Road here, highway here, mainly because of the aux lane that is being built between Roswell Road and Riverside, so we can't just simply go over. So we're going under here and then we go back aerial again just past this, up and over Roswell Road. As we approach the interchange at 285-400. Now what you see at the interchange at 285-400 does include what they're building today in this video. So you'll see about what it will look like when they're done building that project later this year. So this is 285-400. It'll give you a glimpse looking south. We're looking at a potential access point at Johnson's Ferry Road for express lane. There's a lot going on there. We're not sure if it'll work or not. And then also southbound ramps to 400 going in town for express lane dumping into 400 general purpose lanes. I'll slowly rotate you back around and then go up 400 to the MARTA station at North Springs. Okay, so you can stop it.
Thank you. Let's, uh, it's monumental.
The total project from Paces to Henderson Road and up 400 is a little over $5 billion. Again, we broke in that into two packages for more manageable construction, but that's just the one project in the program. The total program cost includes all the projects, is $11 billion.
Well, thanks for coming today. As usual, great presentation. Look forward to seeing you at the Galleria in a couple of days.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Any questions for the board members?
Yes, thank you.
Can you provide us a copy of this presentation?
Absolutely.
Yes, great. And then I like the slide where you blew up the the project at I 285 east going towards 400. I'm curious to see a blow up of a map going towards 20 West, I 285 coming down south. And wanted to get a timeline when the interchange projects are moving forward and the express lanes.
At I 20 and and
I 285 and I 20, yes, going on the west side.
Sure, well, the express lane project going out 20, I 20 is a is programmed, I think it's in 2030 timeframe in the tip. But
That's a start date?
That's where it's currently programmed as far as
What does that mean?
That means until funding is committed to it, you know, that's where that's where it's at. It's in the long range plan. And once funding actually gets committed to the project, it'll move into the short range plan and the tip, and that's when the date gets put on it from a funding perspective.
I see, okay, because the project that you did show us, it had 2018 to 2032.
That's the west side express lanes. That's from Paces Ferry down to somewhere near I 20.
Yes.
And the express lanes will end there until the future I 20 express lanes comes forward. Again, it's in the long range plan, but it's not fully funded in in the current plan. Plus, we do have the interchange reconstruction at 285 and 20 in the M M I P program. And it is funded and we can give you an update separately on that.
Wonderful, okay, great, and thank you. I have to give a shout out to my leadership Cobb classmate, Tim Matthews. Good to see you here.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks again, appreciate you coming today. Okay, the last agenda item is a work session item is there's information regarding upcoming recommendation changes of the Cobb County Code. And I just want to give the commissioners a heads up about how we're going to handle this tomorrow. We have a couple of issues, one of them is I'm hearing there'll be a lot of people coming to the public hearings tomorrow. And we certainly want to accommodate all of them. And we want to do it in a way where everybody feels like, A, that they will be heard and B, we're not giving them some sort of a schedule to work with. And B, I've heard from a lot of the commissioners about one of the about one of the code amendment proposals. So here's what I'm going to be doing tomorrow night to make sure we we fit this all in, including hearing to do the public hearings, but also get the the regular schedule board agenda items completed tomorrow. We're going to start out tomorrow with the presentations. We'll do our first public comment. Then we're going to do the consent and regular agenda items. And then we're going to do all the public hearings after that. That way we have, we're not, we'll be able to do those in segments. Because some people want to stay for the for the regular agenda or the or the consent agenda items and have no have no desire to be here for the public hearings. And then some want to be here just for the public hearing part and there's no topics on regular consent that they're concerned about. So I want to do those collectively in in blocks. So everybody knows when they're going to be, when we're going to be hearing them. And they know that will everyone will get a chance tomorrow night to to comment on the on their proposed subject. Then after the public hearings, we'll do the second public comment, okay? Does everybody understand that? So that I'm just very, very concerned that people are going to, there was some concern about withdrawing one of the consent agenda items tomorrow, but the problem with that is is that we were not going to get word out in time to everybody that we may be doing that. And they're going to show up, they're going to hear that we're proposing withdraw it. And there'll be a lot of resentment that we're trying to cut off discussion about that subject. So I think the best way to do this is to have everybody talk about that subject. And then at the second public, at the second public hearing, that's when we vote on what what we want to do with those various amendment items. It's smoother, involves everybody and we're not cutting anybody out of their opportunity to speak to this board. And it's also not doing a rush to judgment on something when people have not had a chance to comment on a topic. Okay? Yeah, we have to do everything. And I just want to make very sure, we didn't, we're not criticized here that it seems like we're trying to rearrange agendas, so nobody's going to be heard on their topic. And I was just a little concerned about doing a withdrawal tomorrow night. In fact, if we have a large number of people show up for that particular topic and they find out we're not going to be discussing it. There would be some some reasonable resentment there and I want to avoid that on the part of the public.
How will we anticipate, how will we address the anticipated 200 speakers on one day?
Well, we have, we have overflow capability.
First, if they want to comment on the
Well, we'll, we will, we will make sure that we have people, you know, we can't have anybody in here, so we'll make sure that we have people in the other rooms directing them into here for the public comment part of the public hearing. I'll guarantee that if you come here tomorrow night and you want to speak, you will be heard. That's my commitment to you.
Chairman, that would be your intention and then you present it to the board tomorrow night and then they'd be able to vote on that at that point in time.
Okay. Okay, so with that, now we're going to get into code amendments.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to briefly introduce a slightly new process that we're going to follow this year on the code amendments. We will have subject matter experts with the respective chapters come up. Just to very briefly go through and kind of highlight for the board's attention, some of the more important or major changes. We won't read every single bullet point or every single amendment that's being proposed. Rather, we're going to try to summarize for the board. We will perhaps go through a slightly more detailed presentation tomorrow evening, simply so we do read some of those particular amendments into the record. For the board's information, the package that you have received previously that we will be doing a brief presentation on this afternoon covers chapters 2, 10, 18, 54, 66, 78, 90, and 134 of the code. Beginning with chapter two, this is basically a housekeeping item. It does relate or tie back to code enforcement and basically allows for the code enforcement division to enforce film permits as well as the historic preservation ordinance. Moving into chapter 10, I'm going to ask Director Kreider and his staff to come forward to assist as the subject matter experts.
Hello, Chairman, Board, County Manager. We're going to be addressing chapter 10 under Article 1. And section 10-1 is definitions, there are a significant number of edits in our definitions. Also some deletions and some additions that will be in this this proposed code changes. The next section is 10-11, Control of Animals. And I'll read for you a brief synopsis of the ones that'll be in the recommended changes. Under 10-11A1, it shall be unlawful for the owner of any animal, with the exception of cats, to permit such non-feline animal to be out of his or her immediate control and restraint or to be left unattended off the premises of the owner or to be upon the property of another person without the permission of the owner or person in possession of such other property. Then we drop down to 10-11A point 2. It says, when on the premises, I'm sorry, restraint of dogs and or animals shall be maintained as follows. When on the premises of the owner, all animals, with the exception of cats, shall be kept indoors or in a primary enclosure as defined by this chapter in such a manner as to contain the animal within the bounds of the owner's premises or on a leash in the hands of a person that possesses the ability to restrain the animal. 10-112B, when off the premises of the owner, all animals, with the exception of cats, shall at a minimum be maintained on an appropriate chain, leash, or tie, not exceeding six feet in length and in the hands of a person who possesses the ability to restrain the animal. Then we move to the next side, please, sir. And then in section 10-37, under fees, paragraph A, the fees with respect to all services performed in connection with enforcement of this chapter shall be set forth by the Board of Commissioners from time to time. A copy of such fee schedule shall be posted at the headquarters of the Cobb County Animal Services and may be changed at any time and from time to time as determined by the Board of Commissioners. Paragraph B, a person or entity who relinquishes ownership of his or her dog to Cobb County Animal Services shall be assessed a fee payable at the time his or her dog is surrendered to Cobb County Animal Services for care and custody. Paragraph C, the fees established and collected under this chapter and or pursuant to the responsible dog ownership law set forth by OCGA 4-8-20 are not penalties but are imposed for the sole purpose of defraying expenses borne by the county for such animal control and welfare under this chapter or under state law and are subject to change at any time. Paragraph D, Cobb County Animal Services may waive any part of the normally required fees at its discretion. Then we skip over to Division 3, under Animal Empowerment Redemption and Adoption.
Hey Randy, one sec, do you have a question?
Yeah, I've been getting some emails from breeders on the six foot leashes not longer than when they're outside at like doing instructions or something.
At a park or
That was always a six foot.
Pardon?
It was, the six foot was already there, but I understand.
But we, I mean, if we want to propose the change
They just want a longer, they don't want a leash them, they just want a longer leash for training purposes.
Sure. And and we could talk about that and and edit that portion if we
Is it 150 feet too long, you think?
I believe might be.
And this, with the exception of cats, is that correlating to the leash law for cats, removing that and adding this?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The leash law.
Where it says in all these paragraphs, with the exception of cats.
That's, that's
Is that so that, because we're changing the leash law for cats?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a way that that can be just worded in the, with the feral cats as versus pet owner cats?
It would be really hard to distinguish the difference between a feral cat and a and a and a normal pet cat.
Well, I've also gotten emails from folks who don't want cats roaming in their neighborhoods or in their yards. I mean, the cats subject to coyotes out there. Dogs in a fence, bird feeders that they watch intensely. And, you know, I I know nobody puts their cat on the leash and it's not enforced. However, there are people that don't want cats roving around their neighborhood and loose, so.
But this this amendment requires them to have a leash now.
We do have, we, it is in the code now, that they have to be on a leash, it's not enforced.
Oh, I see. I thought I saw
But for the feral cat thing, we were trying to take it out because of that, but Kelly had another idea on the feral cat, but why wait till we get to that? Or we, I don't care.
Well, we're going to require leashes for the cats too?
Right now, yes, sir.
That's, that's what we're, that's what we're going to proposing, right?
But
No, we're proposing to remove it, but I want it, I think it should stay. It it's not enforced, but dogs have to be on a leash, why don't cats?
I mean, I've had more people email me that they don't want that to be removed than I have
Your mic, your mic.
I I've had more input that don't want the leash law for cats to be removed than I have
Are are any of you others getting any?
Well, us out in farmland. You know, we have cats that are in in the barns that, you know, hunt the rats and the rodents, however. You know, our cats are spayed neutered, they're vaccinated, so they're not like the feral cats. So I know several examples out in West Cobb where they don't want the leash law to be applicable to cats because again, we know we have cats that are in barns doing a job. For the most part, they stay on the property. You know, I'm not going to say they don't wander because things happen. So I know from from our perspective out in West Cobb, there was a lot of pushback about having the cats on a leash for that purpose.
I think there's language here, I can't find the section where it makes an exception for animals that are in certain types of residential areas. I'll have to look more closely, but I thought I read that in reviewing this.
But that'd be one way to address that issue, you applied it next to zone, certain zonings.
But, you know, I've had people
Residential and commercial.
Share support because I guess there's a T N R program that releases them back out in the wild. But I'll share with you, you know, personally, I have seen a lot less cats out than I used to in the past. And I don't know if it's due to how animal control has been operating or people have been responding to the code. But I like seeing a lot less wild cats around because I don't know the temperament of that cat. You know, and I'm, most cats are skittish, but when I see a cat and I'm jogging and it stops and looks at me like it's not scared of me, I'm wondering if something wrong with that cat, you know. You know, do I need to run away? Exactly. And I have done that, I've turned away when that cat just looked at me like, what are you doing on my street? You know.
He knows you have a dog.
So, you know, I guess what I don't want to see, I know we want to support helpful programs to animal control, but I don't want to see things go in reverse where all of a sudden we have a bunch of wild cats roaming around, it's not a good
And I think this is a great example of, I can't wait to hear public comment on this.
And I, and I was going to say, you're probably going to hear equal comments on both.
Sure, so this will be one where
Someone's, I'm sorry, Chairman.
Sure.
Someone suggested language about encouraging something that one of the commissioners just stated on spaying and neutering if the animals left outside, like a policy statement about if you have a cat that that is out that the purpose of it is to or to ensure that cats are sterilized, air tipped and air tipped and vaccinated for rabies. I guess they're just trying to encourage people to make sure that if your cat's out that it's been neutered, yes, it doesn't. It does.
Okay, so we'll wait to hear what, during public hearing, when the public
What, I'm just curious to know, because I really would have loved to sit down with you beforehand. What what is your intent with this code? I know where, I know the importance of taking away the leash law, I mean, nobody, you've never really see a cat on a leash and I can understand how that makes sense, but what is the policy intent?
To be able to continue with the T N R program and not break the leash law by by doing so.
Which is to just neuter them and you let them out in the wild?
Correct, for the company, the group to come in and they they take them to the vet, they they trap them. They spay neuter them, they ear tip them, they give them a rabies shot and they put them back in their colony. So that way they don't continue to reproduce and have more kittens.
Are they already doing that or are they looking at this facilitating that?
During a pilot program, we are doing that already.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's a pilot just for some entities, could we anticipate more of them doing this if this passes?
They're, right now, Best Friends Animal Society is doing it and they're passing it over to another group. But I don't foresee anybody, anybody else coming in.
I just think you're going in the right direction with the, you know, we seeing less cats and I just hate to see us go the opposite way.
So if if the taking the cats on the leash becomes controversial, which I know impacts the T N R, what if we just did the policy such as what Commissioner Cupid just said? You know, that essentially, you know, if the cat is is trapped, I mean, it's easy to tell if it's, you know, a house cat or if it's a feral cat. To then be able to, you know, spay neuter, clip the ear, vaccinate and then release. But do that through a policy instead of modifying our code, even though we know cats on a leash is not really an enforceable thing anyways, so that could be another way that we could address this?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, an agreement with Good News or whoever
We're going to contract with to do the T N R program. Do we have to change our code or can we just do an agreement with them? Because we've been doing it as a pilot to see how it goes. And I'm all for the T N R program. It's not costing the county, this group is doing it, funding it and and they're providing a great service for us. But I get the the part that legally, because we have cats now restricted to a leash to a leash, that a feral cat isn't going to be on a leash and, and when we put them back out after they've been, you know, fixed, that's breaking our leash law. So I, I would be in favor of leaving the code like it is, but doing an agreement with them as an exception to that.
Just to play devil's advocate though, that technically when they release the cat, they could be fined into code violation because they're no longer on a leash.
That's your point, right.
Well, then change it to, um, pet owners have to be on, um, and ferals don't.
Here's Carol, um, Carol Brown with Canton Road neighbors sent in a statement that says, and again, if you allow your cat to go outside in your yard, make sure the pet has been spayed or neutered, given shots, microchipped, and wears a collar with tags is recommended. So it's just encouraging people to do it and it's not like people sit around and watch our, you know, read our code amendments just for fun, but it at least lets people know our policy intent.
Right. So we could add that.
In addition to the changes?
We could at, leave the leash law in there, but if they are, um, in your yard, uh, not on, well, they can be on, in your yard, not on a leash, it's just when they are roaming free out of your yard.
Not in the leash line now, they can't be in your yard on a leash.
That's the purpose of the leash law.
Okay. I got you.
Yeah, it says, it says with the exception of cats, so cats don't have to be on a leash.
Now, we're with this.
With this.
That's still not going to, um, address the feral cats because they're not spayed or neutered.
Well, the issue is you can't, you can't, you can't distinguish between the two, that's why the leash law is never going to work, all right?
Yes, sir.
You, you can't, you know, ask your policeman to go up there and, you know, pull the cat aside and start redeeming his rights and then ask him, you know, have you violated the provisions of, so the leash law is, it's not practical, that was the whole purpose of the conversation here to begin with, you've got to be able to something that's enforceable, all right? And the leash law is not enforceable, so, for cats, so let's just forget about the leash law, okay?
I noted them.
Yeah, and we'll deal with the feral cats later, um, I have some questions about can we do this to children, you know, putting them on leashes, is that, is that one of the code enforcements?
We won't, we won't go there.
We're not going that today, I was just curious here. It's over reach of government and parents, it's not enforceable, all right.
Okay, we, we stopped off at, uh, ten dash sixty-seven.
I mean, we're laughing, but I don't see this having a path further tomorrow, I just don't, I don't know how this works.
Well, that's why we want to have public comment because there's four of us here and we've got some great ideas, somewhere other than, other than 200 people who come in tomorrow night, we're going to get a solution somewhere in there.
Because, because we're presenting tomorrow night as is today, correct?
Right, right.
We don't vote till February.
Yeah, we're not changing anything, but I'm just saying the leash law is not enforceable, but let's see what the, let's say that they say tomorrow night, okay?
Okay.
I'm just one vote, I remind myself all the time, I'm just one vote, even in my house, I'm only one vote.
So picking up where we left off under, uh, Division Three, Section Ten Dash Sixty-Seven, with the exception of those animals confiscated under Sections Ten Dash Thirteen B, Ten Dash Thirteen C, and Ten Dash Ninety-Seven, Ten Dash One Twenty-One Two D, and or Ten Dash One Twenty-One Point Seven, all impounded animals shall be kept at the animal shelter for a period of not less than five working days unless redeemed within such period. The addition of Paragraph C, notwithstanding subsection B of this provision, other than feral cats confiscated pursuant to Sections Ten Dash Thirteen B, Ten Dash Thirteen C, Ten Dash Ninety-Seven, and or Ten Dash Twelve, One Twenty-One Point Seven, any impounded feral cats shall be eligible for immediate release from the animal shelter for the purpose of returning such cats to the area from which they were found, provided such feral cats are sterilized, ear tipped, and vaccinated for rabies. Cobb County Animals, Animal Shelter has discretion to determine whether to keep an eligible feral cat at the shelter or release it pursuant to this provision.
Commissioner Burrow.
Okay, before we get into discussion on.
This section, um, Ten Dash Thirty-Seven fees, where it says, um, be a fee for relinquishing ownership, um, I move that we strike that, um, because I, I was, wasn't aware that first of all, we don't take, um, pets from other counties, just Cobb County, and we send them to their respective county to turn in their dog or cat, um, and that, that's what I was referring to out of county turn-ins, so, um, it's been suggested by some groups that we just ask for a donation, but not a mandatory fee if they're turning in, because we don't want them to end up on the side of the road if they can't afford, you know, to keep them and can't afford to pay a fee to turn them in.
Just want to remind, we, we can't strike anything here, we publicize this, we have, we have to have the public hearing on it, and then in February, we can take these kind of actions.
Okay, well, I'm suggesting, suggesting that we delete that and just ask for a donation.
We're just trying to do an overview with all the proposals here so we'll be ready for tomorrow night when people start bringing these points up.
All right. We move on now to Section Ten Dash One Thirty-One, I mean, Ten Dash One Thirty-Five, prohibition on the sale of dogs and cats at pet stores, A, no pet shall be, shall, no pet store shall sell, deliver, offer for sale, barter, auction, giveaway, or otherwise transfer dogs or cats. Nothing in this section shall prevent the owner, operator, or employees of a pet store, retail business, or other commercial establishment located in Cobb County from providing space and appropriate care for dogs and cats owned by Cobb County Animal Shelter. A rescue group, licensed rescue group, an animal care facility, or an animal rescue organization for the purpose of promoting public adoption of dogs and cats, provided the pet store, retail business, or other commercial establishment shall not have any ownership interest in the dogs and cats offered for adoption and shall not receive a fee for providing space for the adoption of any such dogs and cats. Paragraph C, any pet store that is currently engaged in the business of selling, delivering, offering for sale, bartering, auctioning, give, giving away, or otherwise transferring of cats and dogs will have ninety days from the enactment of this ordinance to cease engaging in such activities. Section One, Ten Dash One Thirty-Five Point One, violation and penalties, a pet store that violates Section Ten Dash Thirty-Five A shall be subject to a fine of a thousand dollars for each separate violation. Each dog or cat sold, delivered, offered for sale, bartered, auctioned, given away, adopted, or otherwise transferred or disposed of in violation of Section Ten Dash One Thirty-Five A shall constitute a separate violation.
Thank you, Randy. Who's next?
Jay. Fire.
I think so, I was looking to come up on the slide there.
Um, one, one question, Chairman, I know there's been a lot of discussion on Ten Dash One Thirty-Five and the language, have we considered sending it to the Attorney General ourselves for interpretation?
That will be something, I think that we're, the answer is we already have a legal opinion from the county attorney, don't we, about this proposal, and it might have some issues that violate state law, and I think that's going to be one of the reasons that when we vote on in February, if, if it does violate state law, then we're going to have to vote against it, vote it down.
Okay, but I guess there's a conflict because our county attorney says there is no conflict.
Do we need to move into executive session at this time or are we going to talk about opinions?
You can talk about it now, I mean, my understanding, reading what you sent us.
Well, I.
That's confidential, attorney court privilege.
Well, we're talking about state law, how confidential can it be, all right? I mean, there is an issue like, because this, this is similar proposal to the city of Canton, right?
There are elements of it.
Right, exactly, right. So, we have to be very clear here that in this discussion about this proposal, that we're not violating state or federal law, and if there's any measures of this, it's your responsibility to advise us that what you're proposing violates the law, so that we can make the necessary revisions, uh, deletions or otherwise. So in the case, so in the case here, is what we're, was, is the language in this proposed code amendment, are there any issues that violate federal or state law?
Not the word, not that I'm aware of, based upon the opinion that I've provided you.
Okay, right, okay, so.
But it's my understanding that we were gonna, um, either table or withdraw this for additional consideration at another time because of the Attorney General's opinion that we've received, and I, I think it needs more study and, and work.
And the time to do that is in February when we vote on these provisions.
No.
Not before.
No, you can do it at the agenda meeting tomorrow.
Because we've advertised this for public comment and public hearing.
They can still speak.
That doesn't make any sense to, to withdraw it and have them all come here, that's the issue I was talking about, is if we have them come here, expectation they can make their public opinion, and then we say we're not going to talk about it, then the issue becomes we're.
They didn't say we weren't going to talk about it. They could still talk about it, but we can vote as a board whether or not we're going to move this forward.
Right. You had a consensus of the whole board to do that.
What I'm hearing, I hear the consensus, my concern is, all right, that we have not given them adequate time to inform them that we're going to, we're considering withdrawing this motion, this section of the code, revision, and they're coming here tomorrow night to talk about that, I at least want to give them the opportunity to talk about it, and then we have two more weeks to say, all right, if we in fact plan, if the consensus is to withdraw this revision, we have two weeks to inform them, so they don't come back in two weeks, all right, without the knowledge that we're considering withdrawing it, because the only notified case they have right now is what we're seeing on, uh, on the, uh, on this, on the film right now.
We can do both, yeah, we're not, one doesn't preclude the other, because you can notify them when the meeting occurs tomorrow that we've got a opinion from the state that what we're doing may, may have conflict, commissioners would like to pull this, but we are still inviting you to speak on all the code amendments, including this one, at least they have an awareness that it possibly may not be considered, we can hear their opinion, but we're not leaving them with some thought that.
You can announce that, that's what.
Look, I, I have been in this room when people came to a meeting with the expectation to make a comment and the board decided not to hear it, and then we had, you know, we had some criticism at the board that we're trying to exclude their side being hearing, all right, I heard that, so all I'm doing here, saying here is that tomorrow night, because we didn't get adequate time to advertise that we may be withdrawing this, let them have their say, that may influence whether or not we withdraw it or not, okay?
Okay, then we can vote.
All right, then, then if we choose not to have it at a future meeting, all right?
We have to, before then, the opportunity to speak on anything that was advertised and that is.
That's true, but many of them are coming here to speak with one issue and one issue only, and if that one issue is, we're going to withdraw it without giving the opportunity to talk first.
We aren't giving them an opportunity to talk.
That's what I'm talking, and the, and what I said earlier here this afternoon was, the appropriate way to do that is when we go to vote on it in February, if we do not want to adopt this revision, we vote on it at that time, it's clean.
But on the other hand, if we're, if there is consensus on the board to have it withdrawn, we need to make that known publicly tomorrow, it's being made known right now.
That's fine, I'm happy to do that, all right, but I don't want to do though, is not, say, you have the consensus, that's four of us saying, or five of us saying that we have an opinion, and yet there's a hundred people out there that have another opinion, what are we going to do, ignore that?
No, no, well, I don't think, I'm not comfortable, um, moving forward with this with what we know from the Attorney General's office till it's looked at further, so, uh, everybody has a right to speak and they will show up tomorrow night and speak, but, um, I think it needs to be held or withdrawn or what, whatever we're going to do for further review.
And we'll do that after we hear them, if you want tomorrow night, if we, if we decide that we want to, you know, go ahead and change the, our, our agenda for February by withdrawing this, we can do that at the end of, after public hearing tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
I want to make sure they're heard first because we have not given them ample opportunity, appropriate opportunity, uh, to know that we, we have a consensus here and it seems like we're just go ahead and like, we decided, and thank you for your interest in your comments, but we already decided what we're going to do here, that's not fair to them, that's all I'm saying, okay, so, if we wanted, if we want to withdraw this after tomorrow, after public hearing, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But let's at least let them say something, so they know they're coming here and that their, their voices are heard first before we take any action, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Jay.
Uh, we've got two, uh, proposals for the Chapter Fifty-four, the Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinances, the first of which, uh, is an adoption to give us some more flexibility with determining occupant loads in existing buildings in Cobb County, uh, since the original proposal, staff has done some research and with a new life safety code that was adopted effective January first, two thousand eighteen by the State Fire Marshal's Office, which is effective in Georgia as well, this section may not be needed, so we're pulling that together and we're going to be, uh, working with commissioners, uh, on what this may need to be adjusted going forward because of the recent adoption of state laws. The second adoption, uh, the second proposal is the proposal of establishing an appeals board for fire safety codes in Cobb County, uh, since this proposal was made, uh, we're examining the building code, the building department and their appeals process to try to make that very similar, uh, so that that helps the public navigate the process, and also, we're looking at what the building department already does to see if we need to adjust the makeup of this board on that, but we're, staff is working on that as well since we received this proposal, so those are the two things, and the only two things that we're looking at changes on Chapter Fifty-four on the fire safety codes. Any questions?
Any questions, commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Jessica Gwynne, Cobb County Community Development. Um, I've had the opportunity to meet with each of you on our community development code amendments, so I'm not going to go into great detail on these, um, if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer those. So the first item we have is Chapter Sixty-Six, this is historic preservation, the changes to Chapter Sixty-Six are really to essentially provide clarity to the code that we already had adopted, so it's not really material changes in terms of the code itself, so first we are adding definitions for buildings and structures. The next several sections to reflect that includes building, whereas before, building wasn't in there before, um, it also changes the notification requirement on certificates of appropriateness to fifteen and forty-five days, so notification has to go out no less than fifteen, no more than forty-five days prior to consideration of the certificate, and that just brings it into line with the zoning process. Uh, again, adding building, whereas before it wasn't in there, clarifying standards that we're going to use to determine whether or not, um, something qualifies for a certificate of appropriateness, it's sort of, what's in there right now is, is not very clear, so again, just adding clarity, and then finally, um, Section Sixty-Six Dash Eighty-Five is currently, as you know, and as we've discussed, the code says that the Historic Preservation Commission will either approve or deny an application for a certificate of appropriateness. Here we're clarifying that they may approve it as it's proposed, they can add modifications or stipulations, um, and also that they're going to consider the relationship of the request to the other properties that are in the historic district, right now it says immediate neighborhood, immediate neighborhood is sort of subjective, so to really clarify, we're looking at it in comparison to other properties in the historic district. And the next piece, Chapter Seventy-Eight, this is, we're shifting gears a little bit, here this pertains to health spas, um, this is all again, no real material changes to the code itself, but just some clarifying language that reflects some language that was adopted by the state last year.
Thank you, Jessica.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, uh, undertaking our revisions this year's, uh, our Operations Division Manager, Mr. Michael Brantley, uh, he has worked diligently on this, so he's going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Keith, uh, Section Ninety-One is County Parks Department, that changes the name, the name's changed. The name's changed twice since the codes have been updated. It was uh Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department. Then it went to Parks with the periods. Now it's just Parks. So we've made made that change in a lot of the sections. So a lot of the sections would just be cleanups to that, taking it away from Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department. Section ninety fifty-two, hours of operation. One of the updated changes was that, was it actually puts the designation of parks to the B O C responsibility. Originally, the Recreation Board had the responsibility of naming a park, whether it would be passive or active. This was back made when the uh Recreation Board was a little bit more of a policymaking legal board than a advisory board. Now we have the county manager for the government, so it's gone back to the B O C for their responsibility. Uh same thing, updated the name. In section ninety fifty-four, ejection of persons causing disturbances or violating law. One of the issues with the this section, any person that was barred or suspended or ejected from a a park or facility, you could only eject them for twenty-four hours and they could come back. This actually just extends the time that a person can be ejected uh from a park or facility for doing things that they shouldn't be. Section ninety fifty-five, commercial activity. It's updated to allow the Parks Director to.
How how long, what's the time period you can eject them for?
There was, there was no time period. It's just stated that you can do it. A lot of times, we we look at something as of a year, depending upon the severity of the crime. Um we've had some unfortunate scuffles uh between softball teams at Al Bishop Park that involved uh bats. So things like that, you probably want to kick people out for more than a day because things are still a little bit uh heated, so you try to let things cool down, so that's just something.
Whose discretion is it as to what?
The Parks Director. It could be, it could be the Parks Director. It could be the Pete Police, something, something along that nature. It would not be uh regular staff. Go on. Uh section ninety fifty-five, again, commercial activity, updated to allow the Parks Director to approve commercial activity in the parks. Uh section ninety fifty-six, swimming, bathing and wading, same thing. It's updated to remove the Recreation Board as a supervisor over the bodies of water, and then change the supervision of the bodies of water under Parks' control to the Director. Ninety fifty-eight, golfing regulated, simply states you cannot golf in an athletic field. That causes damage. It can cause uh safety issues for actually golfing um in the outfields of some of our athletic fields. Ninety fifty-nine, damaging or removal of any park property or vegetation. Again, same thing. It's unlawful to dig up. Uh damage, remove trees, deface, vandalize with a graffiti. Um one of the things that we're looking at with this is working with our friends groups to make sure that our friends groups are all under the same uh same page. So when people go out, they should not be able to just take things out of parks. We've actually had that to where people just come into a park, decide that they like several old flat rocks, and they put them in the car and take them with them. So this again just makes it uh makes it unlawful to do that. Uh same thing for ninety sixty, ninety sixty-one. It's just a name change between the closure of recreation areas and the failure to obey officially posted signs. Ninety sixty-two would be the violations and enforcement. When the code was written uh many, many years ago, back in the seventies, I believe, uh the first violation was thirty-five dollars. We've worked with our Cobb PD Rangers and talked about that. We've now updated that to a one hundred dollar fine for the first violation. And then multiple fines or uh multiple fines over a one-year period would go up from a hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars per occurrence. Ninety sixty-three is restriction or prohibited uses of park facilities. There are many uh subsections inside of this one. The first one, A, would be pyrotechnics, uh unlawful for persons to display, use, set off, ignite, firecrackers, fireworks, et cetera. Uh pyrotechnics in a park. We actually had uh one of our maintenance buildings, unfortunately, that burnt down a couple of years ago due to fireworks hitting the maintenance building. That cost us a lot of money, so uh we've just put that in the code. Uh ninety sixty-three, B, um we we've got, I've got one little issue that I've got to fix with with uh ninety sixty-three. B, but B has four subsets under it. Uh number one, be the duty of every animal owner or custodian of such animal to have physical control of the animal by leash or lead line no longer than six feet at all times. Um that actually originally was ten feet. Um I made the change. Should not have, but I made the change after reading chapter ten and seeing that they changed it to six feet. Thought we would marry them up and be the same, but as I hear before, y'all are looking at the possibility of going to a ten-foot on chapter ten. So we can do the same thing with this one, is to go to a ten-foot if that's what the board deems necessary. And we can do that in between the the first and second. Uh number two, uh other service, other than service animals is necessary, or unless authorized by permit, it should be unlawful for any person with a domestic animal to access areas of a park or recreation facility which are restricted. Uh here's where it gets a little tricky. Uh B three, where it shows the duty of every animal uh to remove animals uh due to growling, bearing of teeth, fangs, biting or attempts, that actually should be B four. I apologize for that. B three actually states it shall be the duty of every animal owner or custodian of such animal in a park or recreation facility to have in his or her possession proof of a current rabies vaccination for the animal. So we'll actually make that B three, make B three, B four, and just clean that up inside of the, inside of the presentation. Ninety sixty-three, B five, shall be the duty of every animal or whose animal is in a park or recreation facility to immediately dispose of solid waste deposited by the animal except for horses on designated equestrian trails. C starts off talking about off-leash dog parks. We have several off-leash dog parks in the county. The the provisions of that, no owner or custodian of a dangerous vicious or guard protection canine as defined in section ten-ten of the Animal Control Ordinance shall permit the canine to be in an off-leash area at any time. Again, it goes back to aggressive, dangerous or vicious dogs inside of a, inside of a dog park. Uh same thing with B two, no person shall allow an animal other than a canine to enter or remain in an area that has been designated as an off-leash area, because again, these are off-leash dog parks. Number three, owner or custodian of a canine in an off-leash area shall ensure that such dog is under control at all times. And number four, an animal control officer or other officer empowered by to act by law may order that a canine be put on a leash and or order that a canine be removed from the off-leash area at any time. Going on, ninety sixty-three, D, actually has, it shall be unlawful for any person to discharge a firearm in a park or recreation facility. E, camping prohibited, simply states where you can or can't camp inside of a facility. Use of detection device, devices prohibited. This goes back to metal detecting. You would be amazed at how many people think that they're digging up a treasure and they dig up things that are actually part of the park that will cause damage.
I was just on on Delta there.
Yes, sir.
And there's always that person that's gonna, you know, use this as an out, but to discharge a firearm in any park or recreation facility unless an authorized police officer or public safety official in the exercise of his duties.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chan. We actually talked about that and we, and we said if y'all deem that necessary, we could add that to that.
I want to make sure, because I don't want to let somebody get off because, hey, you know.
Absolutely. We can add that. Going back, uh ninety sixty-three, G, would be improper personal conduct prohibited. Just gives a little bit more of a what you should and shouldn't be doing inside of a park. H is the use or possession of controlled substances prohibited. I think that speaks for itself inside of a park or recreation facility. And then I is the use of e-bikes on trails. Uh there are three classes of e-bikes, class one, class two and class three. Class one is one of your lower level of e-bikes. Uh e-bike is an electronic bike. Uh the the level one bikes are pedal assist. You have to be pedaling to get a little bit of assistance from the e-bike. Level two and level three actually have throttle-actuated motors. They're a little bit more powerful and you can get a little bit faster. Um so we think that the class one e-bikes are best for the Silver Comet Trail, Bob Cowan, uh Noonday Creek, any trails that we are uh we have control over, so we feel like the class one e-bikes are best uh used for those. Ninety sixty-six, ninety sixty-seven, pretty much the same thing with the name change. Ninety sixty-eight, we actually updated the times to eleven oh one P M to six A M for parked vehicles. Uh it was a difference in, it originally stated midnight to to six A M, and that did not correlate with the original hours of operation from earlier in the code. Um also added language for sunset to sunrise parking in passive parks. And then section ninety seventy is just a severability clause that if any of our clauses inside of chapter ninety are deemed um to be unlawful, then it does not completely throw out the rest of the chapter. So that's all we have for chapter ninety. Any questions?
Jay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Good updates.
Jay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go over the changes to chapter one thirty-four zoning now. There are several. Some of them, again, are more cleanup items, whereas others are more substantial changes. Um of course, we had pre-commissioners who requested to discuss backyard chickens as part of this code amendment process. Uh the first step currently, backyard chickens are allowed as a temporary land use permit on properties less than two acres. So the first change here is to delete the requirement for a temporary land use permit um for backyard chickens on properties less than two acres. So we'll discuss that a little bit more later on. Um the next one is a cleanup item. As you recall, we adopted the um purpose-built student housing code back in the fall. When we did that, the rendering that's currently in there to reflect the buffers and the setback along single-family residential um did not match the language. There were several changes and reiterations of that. So what we're doing now is incorporating a new rendering that actually matches the language. So again, no material change there. This is a new section, uh special land use. Yes, sir.
Jessica, one second. Commissioner Gambrell has a question.
Actually, Jessica, um on number thirty-five, um you say single fat, single family detached dwelling. It should be dwelling.
Yes, we've, we've got that. Thank you.
Okay.
That was southern, dwelling. Um we'll, we'll make sure that correction goes on the next, next package, though. Um the next piece, this is a, a new section again, limited impact professional services, and this is something that we are still continuing to work on and refine along with Commissioner Gambrell. Um essentially here, what this is going to allow for is a special land use permit that would allow for the reuse of single-family detached dwellings um for low-intensity commercial uses. And there are several prescribed criteria where that would be um allowable, which would require an existing house to be reused. Um no ground disturbance that's gonna require a land disturbance permit. Um plans would have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners, no outdoor displays of storage. You all would have the opportunity to set the hours and days of operation, and also that it would be approved for a specific use. Again, this is something that we're still working through to to refine, and Commissioner Gambrell, thank you for the comments that you sent from, from the Chamber of Commerce, and we're taking a look at those and the, those recommendations, and we'll have some, some amendments to that. The next piece is dealing with property maintenance. We're adding to our gutters and shutters section that gutter shall be kept free from obstruction. Um we're also adding some language with regard to exterior building surface maintenance. The intent of both of these is to um give code enforcement some enforcement abilities where currently they have none on things like two-foot tall pine trees growing in a gutter um so that we can mitigate some of those maintenance issues before they become a nuisance abatement issue that the county needs to address. Uh the next one, again, is a pretty simple amendment. This is to add thrift store or second-hand stores in allowable use in the neighborhood retail commercial district. Yes, ma'am.
Thrift store or instead of second-hand store consignment.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. And we'll, we'll make sure that is in the um next version.
We did have a letter from the Mableton Improvement Coalition that's not in favor of this. Uh the reason this is coming forward is we've had a few zonings where a goodwill or a consignment shop wanted to go in an N R C code zoning, and they had to come back through zoning or other business to be allowed to because it was not incorporated in the code. So.
Very good. We'll change that language on that one.
I mean, the issues that Robin brought up in her letter is um, I mean, there, there are true concerns of these in our district, especially with the amount of storage that these sites have outdoors and.
But then we'll come through the zoning.
I mean, it already goes through code, but similar to the issue that we had at another zoning hearing, the code enforcement process is, could sometimes be a lengthy process in your community can be dealing with less responsible maintenance of, of a site for an extended period of time. I mean, I'm curious to know why that was excluded in the first place. I mean, it must have been excluded for a reason, maybe. You, now you're new.
She's way too young.
I was gonna say, I'm sure that was something that's been in the code for quite some time, and I think, um, you know, over the years, thrift stores, consignment stores have really evolved in a lot of ways, but then there are still um some of the uses that do have some of the current concerns that have been expressed by the Mableton Improvement Coalition.
I don't know if there's a happy medium here.
Well, we can, we'll be glad to take a look at that and see if there's some sort of middle ground. Okay, um the next piece is dealing with traffic and parking. This is to allow for gravel parking on our district lots, the residential lots that are greater than five acres. Um used for agricultural, equestrian or other farm-type uses. Again, this is something that we've been talking with Commissioner Gambrell about some potential changes to. Also, the Planning Commission recommended removing the language about agricultural, equestrian and other farm-type uses. Essentially, if the property is over five acres, there should be no need for a, you know, two-hundred-foot-long concrete driveway. Um so this is something that we're continuing to look at and to come up with the, the best language there to achieve the goal.
But Jessica, where it says maybe gravel, that doesn't mean it has to be, so it could still be parking on grass.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll, we'll take, we'll take a look at it and see, see how we best clarify that it's an unimproved surface and does not have, you know, right now it has to be an improved surface, a hardened surface, and making it clear that the intention is that it doesn't have to be that hardened surface that currently the code requires.
Are they gonna be required to park a certain distance from the road?
That's a, something else that we're looking at, including as a part of that to, so that it's not just.
Cars parked all over the grass for everyone to see, because some larger lots are still adjacent to, you know, platted subdivisions, and if it's a smaller lot, that, you know, there's an issue of just cars just being parked all over. There's also an issue to me that I have of gravel being kicked out into the main road, which we have going on in our area, where even with the apron, you see, still see a lot of gravel debris that comes in and it starts to block storm drains.
Right.
I, I don't, what's the apron that's, is there an apron acquired in this code of twenty-five feet?
It's a twenty-five-foot um paved or asphalt apron, and that's typical of, you know, the variances that come through to request this. That's the typical standard D O T condition that's attached um as those are approved.
Yeah, I would say not visible from the road, but if it's five acres, you really don't have to worry about impact on stormwater or anything on somebody else's property.
It depends. I'm saying, I'm saying when the cars come out, it kicks the gravel onto the roadway, and then it starts to wash down into the um storm drains along the road.
These don't have to be gravel, though. They could be parking.
On the grass, I'm, I know, but I'm just saying there is, there's, I can see what's, I see what the intent is. But if there's somehow a way to move that activity towards as far away from the roadway as possible beyond twenty-five feet, it just helps to mitigate some of these concerns.
Well, we're glad to continue looking at that and, you know, if there's, again, it's.
Well, how far do you want it? Fifty feet? I mean, we gotta, we gotta give them some kind of a guideline.
I mean, it's five acres. Yeah, it's just five acres, so I really would have to sit here and crunch and do math, because some five-acre lots, the house may not be set back as far as some other homes. Some homes may have a larger backyard and the house is pulled up closer to the road. It could be the house that's, sometimes the acreage or the wider lot could be to the, to the side of the homes. I mean, it's just, all depends on how lots are configured. I know sometimes I see cars just parked all over homes driveway, and it's still, I mean, it's parked without rhyme or reason, and it, and it looks like an eyesore from the roadway.
But then, wouldn't that still be subject to our parking requirements based on the size of the home? So, so um I don't know what it is. I think it's like six hundred and fifty feet. I don't think we have any, one from code enforcement here. Or Rob, maybe you. So, so um, I don't know what it is. I think it's like six hundred and fifty feet. I don't think we have any one from code enforcement here. Or Rob, maybe you know.
Three hundred ninety.
How many, how many square feet you would need per vehicle?
Three ninety.
Three ninety. So that would still be in place, so you wouldn't be able to park
outside.
Ten cars on five acres if you only had a two thousand square foot home.
But then, but this code isn't addressing home size. It's just addressing.
But that code doesn't go away as far as the number of vehicles.
True. All I'm saying, we may have to look at all of these. I'm not saying I have the answer here, but what I'm saying is I see this code facilitating vehicles being parked all over someone's lawn in an unimproved fashion and potentially close to the road based off of the language that I see here. And it's, and I don't think that's what the intent is of this code.
No, the intent, um, I'm just gonna give a quick back history. Um someone went down corner road, which is large parcel acre and pretty much turned in all the homes in there for code violations for parking on a non-hardened surface. But some of these were farmland, so they were tractors parked out in fields. And it generated a lot of code violations that shouldn't have happened. So this is why I went to um community development and asked to review this because we have situations where you know, a tractor should be able to be sitting out in the middle of a field on an unhardened surface.
And so maybe can we restrict this to more than just to our district? I I don't know. I see what you're saying, but maybe there's just a way to limit.
Right, but you have to remember, I've got farms out there that that are actively being farmed, that are zoned R twenty. And that's why they originally got a code violation because they had the R twenty designation, even though they were multiple acres.
I hear you. I'm sure we have just um properties in all of our districts that have acreage, and certainly I don't have to the extent of West Cobb, but I know we have some homes that have larger lots where the home is close to the road and the cars just do what whatever. So maybe there's a way to get to if they're using the land. I mean, if it's a, I don't, maybe there's a way to be more specific.
Well, Jessica and I had talked about, you know, not allowing the cars to be parked in front of the essentially front setback line. So if they were gonna park additional cars, it would have to be, you know, behind the front setback line. Therefore, you wouldn't get the cars parked in the front yard.
What's the front setback on a five-acre lot for R twenty?
It did, well, it depends on where you set the height. Because an R twenty only has a thirty-five-foot front setback, but
and let there be a variance to, I mean, add it with that. I just, I I I see this, I see what you're trying to do, but I think it could have in some areas it may make sense, but not broadly. It could be, it could be messy.
Okay, I would recommend you two ladies get together and come up with some sort of you know, compromise, language, and we'll go from there. We still have two more weeks, right? Yeah, so we got plenty of time. And we'll still hear from the public tomorrow night, too. So, and maybe an answer out there that we haven't heard yet. I I hear both sides, you know. She's she's responding to an area concerned in her area. And Commissioner Cuba has special concern on her area. So, okay, where's where's the middle ground here? We'll find it.
All right, the the next section again is really a cleanup item. This is whenever the Mableton Parkway, Veterans Memorial Highway um overlay district was brought into the code. It didn't bring over the applicability standards. So that's what we're doing, is just making it clear when those standards are applicable. And now we're back to the backyard chickens. This is where, rather than requiring a temporary land use permit for backyard chickens on properties under eighty thousand square feet, you would be able to have that by right under these standards. Um these are pretty much the same standards that are currently in the code for the temporary land use permit. Only one chicken per five thousand square feet, only hens, fenced area at the rear of the house, coops and other buil- buildings located minimum twenty-five feet from the property lines. Um shouldn't cause a nuisance, no slaughter on site. And then the addition here is that this in no way gives you the right to circumvent your HOA or neighborhood um covenants or regulations.
You know, put them on leash. There's, there's a major obstacle here. There's no input from your neighbors, adjoining neighbors or HOA. Unless it's in their covenants, it's restricted.
Yeah, the eight, the covenants would be more restrictive.
Right.
Right. Was still applied Trump.
But the way it is now, we look at it on a case-by-case basis with a lump. Um and we did reduce the fee for the lumps the last couple of years ago cuz it's seventy-five and fifty for the renewal now. It used to be the two or three hundred that every lump had to pay. The heartburn I have here is that anybody anybody in a platted subdivision or anywhere in the county can have one chicken per five thousand square feet. So if you're on a R twenty lot, you can have four chickens and no, no say from your neighbors.
No, it says.
No.
Chicken shall not cause nuisance as defined by state law. So if a neighbor says it's a nuisance, that's an issue there. It's, you know, we have three commissioners who are looking forward to this, so we'll see what happens here.
I know how to find them.
Jessica, we have code that addresses other farm animals?
Uh yes, there is code that's pertinent to livestock, yes.
The livestock, yes, okay, cuz we just received, I mean, we, at least I received an email with someone thinking this is a slippery slope into us incorporating this for other animals. But this code specifically refers to backyard chickens.
Correct. Yeah. Uh the next piece, this is really the the most substantial new addition to the zoning code. Um this is to address short-term rentals. I will say that the code that we've proposed is basically on Hall County's code, and they recently, just last year, updated their code after it having been in um in effect for a while. They saw some things that were working, some things that were not, and so made some changes, and we've also taken a look at those. Um essentially, right now, we have no mechanism to regulate short-term rentals. Um so what we're looking to do here is to require them to come in and get an occupational tax certificate, so a business license. And through that process, they would designate a short-term rental agent, someone who's local, who could respond to the property right away um if there were any issues. So the county would have that contact information. They would also have to share that with their neighbors, so they would know who to call if the occupants there at the house this weekend are getting a little rowdy or if there are other issues there.
And they have to have a permit.
Uh the occupational tax certificate is the permit essentially, correct.
And no more than thirty days rental.
Right. And short-term rental is defined as no more than thirty consecutive days.
A lot of the emails I've been getting think that we're allowing this instead of really making it more restrictive because it isn't addressed in the code. And, you know, Commissioner Ott and I asked that it be that staff come up with something because um there's a lot of these in our districts. So this is actually making it, making it harder to to do because we didn't have anything in the code to address this and um this is an ongoing issue. Is there legally, and I was, I know Debbie Blair's here, was she the one who, legal? Who, let me just ask you, legal, um, could this be addressed as not allowed period or in a subdivision or specific?
Well, some of those same restrictions would be like you were talking about with, just a minute ago, with backyard chickens. I mean, there could be some restrictive covenants of homeowner associations that potentially would prohibit it, depending on what the restrictions are of those covenants. So.
Right, but we don't get into covenants. I'm talking about for the county code. Is there any way we can prohibit these in platted subdivisions or R fifteen or R twenty, something that is so, you know, houses are close together or something, or R S Ls or whatever. Are we legally allowed to do that?
And there's a lot of litigation related to that. I think that's why we looked to one that had been in place for a while that seemed to have regularly good restrictions on it. And that's why we came up with this model. There is a more aggressive model, like you said, but there also are a lot of people who are actually in favor of being able to rent their homes, too. So it's it's a balance between the two. But we're ready to listen to the board, so.
And when they get the business license or occupational tax license, is that good for a year and then they, but they could only rent them out thirty days at a time? Or what, how does that work?
The the occupational tax certificate, regardless of whether it's short-term rental or uh fast food restaurant, is always good for one year and it's renewed annually.
Okay. And is code enforcement gonna be responsible for enforcement?
Code enforcement, along with the the police department for things like, for instance, if there's a noise issue and those sorts of things, of course, the police department handles um noise violation. If there's problems with parking on the street, blocking the road, you know, that again is is something there. But what this does and what what this gives some code enforcement, some enforcement power over, is if we have some, first of all, if we have a short-term rental that's operating and they've not come through and gotten their occupational tax cer- certificate, code enforcement will have some ability to pursue that. Um if they're not in compliance with all the requirements of this code here, code enforcement would be able to pursue that, and there are some penalties outlined in the in this code section.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica.
Excuse me, Jessica. Nothing precludes an HOA from going to the county to get contact information. We've received some emails where people are requesting that HOAs also be given.
Uh I I did see those emails, and I think that's an easy add to the code, that if there is an HOA, that the HOA would also be notified that, you know, there's already some notification mechanisms built into this for the the immediate neighbors, but if it's an area that has an HOA, I think that's reasonable to include.
And then liability insurance, is that something we can codify?
I saw that also, and that's something that we can certainly take a look at along with the county attorney's office.
Okay.
And I will say on this one, um with the short-term rental code, when we took these, this package of code amendments to the planning commission back at the beginning of January, um this is one that they did recommend holdings. They had some questions, so we've worked on refining that and sent them an updated um draft today, or actually last night, I sent it out last night, with some of the the clarifications and adjustments they wanted to see. So they're gonna be hearing it again on February fifth before this comes back before you all for adoption. So at that point, I expect that we'll have a recommendation from the planning commission to share with you, have a second read. And I'm glad to answer any additional questions.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe that's it, right? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.